Then the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit the chamber. So by left, you'd go through those double doors, turn left, down the flight of stairs, and outside of the building. Or perhaps the best way for you is to exit through the double doors in the rear of the chamber. In either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Secretary, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Charles Ladd, absent. Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Staff reports, town attorneys report. Any questions concerning the town attorney? Hearing then.
Hold up.
I'm sorry. Hearing done, you move on. Zoning enforcement officer, Roger.
We don't have, we don't have a report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Approval of minutes, I guess, is August 24th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 24th, 2017. Second.
Motion's made, second. Any additions, errors, or omissions? Go ahead.
I have some additions on page two. The second paragraph down. This chairman, Chairman Durin, asked whether anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application. Nobody came forward. We didn't show that the public hearing was closed, so that wasn't referenced there. And then actually, the next public hearing down, again, we didn't do that as well. We didn't say that the public hearing was closed. So I think it's important we note that that, it was closed. On the next page, we did do it. So I just, consistency and make sure it's in the record, so. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Any further? I had several along with the same, that was just mentioned, the, in places where, let's see, I get my thoughts here. What was it you, oh, where the, where I call the offices. It should be mentioned, I called three times. Not just I called, because legally, I'm required to call three times. And if you don't mention it, so, that, and that's several places in those minutes. I won't go through each, each one. You know, it's on page three. Page three, one, two, three, four, five, six, paragraph down. I asked, and there it would go, I asked three times whether anybody else would like to address the commission. But it's gotta go in that I've asked the three times. Page seven, I have on notes, let's see what's there. No, it's okay. It's the same, same type of thing. Oh, I'm sorry. Page eight. Next to last paragraph. Chairman Durin stated the motion would have to state. There's a B in there, it's the typo error, I guess. Anything else? Hearing done, all in favor, is amended? Linda?
I abstain.
Okay, one abstention, six, six-four, one abstained.
Mrs. Chairman, with your indulgence, there was a couple of people who weren't here last time, and this is Elizabeth Boulay, who is the, gonna be taking minutes on the go-forward, so.
Okay.
Okay. On the page, I'm sorry. October 5th, I believe, is the next one, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of October 5th, 2017.
Second.
Motion's made, it's second. Any errors, additions, or omissions?
Yes, on page two, first paragraph, it says alternate Commissioner Higley opposed to DeGray. And then, same thing, all down.
I picked up that too, right here.
Yeah.
She said it's DeGray.
There was another one.
Yeah, I picked up on those two. I was like, wait a second. Yeah.
She's seated, and so.
We can't get used to her being there, that's all.
That's why we don't love you, Ginny. It's just.
I know. Nobody told me.
And that was about it. Okay.
Anyone further? No, same comments as ask anyone would like to speak, and I get an S. Asked three times, and there, on several pages, I won't go through it. Anyone further? Hearing done, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Oh, two abstentions. You're slow on the hand.
I wish it here.
Okay. Five and two abstentions. But you could still vote for them, by the way.
Let me have my fun the last few minutes.
Public participation at this point in the meeting Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in the town of Enfield from anyone who's present, provided that you may not discuss any matter of business at this time that is elsewhere on this evening's agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Last call to address the commission under those conditions. Okay, then we'll move on. Bond releases, we have none. Roger, we taking care of all those?
Yeah, there were no pending bond release, other than the mulch place that we're still waiting on particular information.
Old business, public hearing, 2878-16.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, maybe under bond release, a matter did come up, and that is on the Shaker Heights subdivision. The present, the company that's doing this Phase Two wanted to know if the bond that was put up by the previous owner of the site for Phase One for soil erosion control could be transferred to, to them. The procedure has always been that the original applicant asks for the money back, is inspected that way, make sure that it's been done on Phase One, and then the, the new owner posts their own bond. So I'm just reporting that, that that's how we did inform them, in case the commission had any difference of opinion on that.
Finance wouldn't release it to anybody other than the name that was on the original paperwork, so it couldn't be done.
We had discussed that.
Even if we, you know, wanted to.
Okay. Now, 2878-1654, King Street. Applicat-, Secretary, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Charles Ladd is absent. Nicholas Ficus.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Applicant here? Before you get started, our requirements ask for a Level A plan, and I see you're giving us a D. What's the excuse or the reason?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Dana Steele, professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates, their offices at 1 Shoaham Road in East Windsor. We have submitted a Class D plan, and we've requested a waiver of the A2 requirement. The reason is because we're not proposing any improvements. This is strictly a change-of-use application. There's a few minor items that were, things that we're gonna be removing from, from the site, and we're gonna be doing some. But as far as, we're not expanding, we're not, we're not doing anything significant in the site. It's really just changing from one use to another, and, and that's inconsistent with how you've handled applications in the past for this site. Most of the other applications did not have an A2 survey.
There's been a lot going on since this one was done.
Sure. So.
This two, the last A2 was done, I don't know, what's the date?
We did give a proposal to the applicant, Industrial Diesel and Driveline, who's moving into one of the, one of the buildings on this, on this property, and, but the, the cost of that, of that A2 survey is between $10,000 and $15,000. So considering the, the scope of what's being proposed, we're requesting a waiver of that requirement. One of the things that, that staff looked at when, when evaluating this request was the presence of an, of an existing A2 survey on, on file already with the town, and there is one that's on file with the town.
There is, but what's the date on that? That's what I was looking for.
It was approved in 1985, signed in 1986, but the site hasn't changed. I mean, it's, it's been.
Well, there's been a lot going on, and, on back and forth there. There's appellate, there's appellate.
There's been a lot of use changes, yes, but not a lot of changes to the site plan. Not, not changes to parking, not changes to layout. It's the same site that it's been really for, the owner purchased the property 20 years ago, and it hasn't, it hasn't changed significantly in that, in that time. So it's essentially, it's accurate, it's, it's a, it's accurate depiction of what's, what's there today, and considering the limited nature of what's being proposed, that's why the waiver is being requested.
Well, the waiver would be up to the total commission, it's not mine, but.
Sure.
You have.
Dana, why couldn't you have just used the original one and modified it?
We did, we did. It's a, it, we took the, the, the 86 plan, and we copied it, but we can't stamp it with A2 without, without doing all, all of the research work that, that they did. So you can't, you can't just stamp someone else's plan, and that, and that survey no longer is around.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, then, that, that, so that they.
No, I appreciate that. That is probably the first.
The commission knows.
The first order of business after my presentation. You'll have to consider that, that waiver, and, and then the rest of the application. Shall I begin?
Sure, yes.
This is an application for Industrial Diesel and Driveline. It is, they, they are a construction equipment repair business, and they would like to locate on an existing building on, on the site. We've also modified our application to include approval of all the existing uses in the site. As, as was mentioned, there's been, there's been uses that have come and gone, and so the intent is to, is to bring everything up current with, with, with what, what is there. And so we've done that primarily by providing this, this layout, and I've colored it up just with regard to the, some, some of the, the key, key issues with this application, but this property fronts on Kings, King Street, Route 5, as well as Depot Hill Road. It's a corner parcel, and it actually bounds I-91 on the west side of the property. There is a, a primary building here, which is a two-story office building, and, and there are numerous tenants in that, in, in this, in this space here. There's a smaller parking lot in the upper level here, and at the corner of the site, and then there is a, a larger parking area down in, in the lower portion of the site. The site has a number of, of existing curb cuts. There's 1, 2, 3 on Depot Hill Road, and 1, 2 on, on King Street. And there is, there are two other main buildings on the site. This is a, this is a enclosed, covered storage area, and this is a garage, a completely enclosed garage at the, at the end near Depot Street. And this is a larger garage building that was previously occupied by one of, one of the tenants called Winding Brook, and, and they're a trucking company. They have a fleet of, of trucks, and that's the vehicles that you see, the tractor trailers that are parked, parked in the back are, are theirs, and, and they use this garage space for repairing their, their own vehicles. As, as a result, they did not require a DMV permit because they were only repairing their own vehicles. It wasn't a business repairing other people's vehicles. Industrial Diesel, however, wants to repair other motor vehicles. That's why they need not just approval from this commission, but also go to ZBA after this for a location permit for, for, for that use. So the, the site is sloped from, from King, from King Street down to the back. This is, this back area is much lower, and this back area is partly pavement, partly gravel. To the, to the north is gravel, and, and it's used for, for truck parking and outside storage. And so you're, you're, you've recently adopted a new outside storage regulation, which, which provides more guidelines and limitations to what, what can be done with outside storage. And so it's attempted to demonstrate that this plan conforms with that, that requirement. We have a calculation below the parking area at the, at the bottom of the page, showing that, that we meet the 20% maximum based on these orange areas here on the plan. In addition, the, the applicant has proposed to, there's, there's, there's a fence that runs along the property line here, and at one time, this area to the, to the east of this, of this, of this display area was, was gravel in, in outside storage, but it's since become overgrown, and it's actually developed into a very thick buffer, a, a thick screening. And I, I know that the property owner has spoken with the, the neighbor who lives here. This is, this property is bounded to the north by two parcels that are zoned R33. So your regulations require a 100-foot buffer along that, that residential boundary, so that's shown by this yellow, this yellow line here on, on the plan. And as, as you can see, there's, there's a cell tower in the back corner that's, that's within that buffer that was approved in 2000. The existing site, site driveway coming in is, is in, in that buffer, and as, as well as, right, right now, there, one of the tenants, who is federal rent offense, it's on, it's on the, the list of, of uses there on the parking calculations. One of the tenants, rent offense, stores their, their chain link fence materials. They stack them up in, in stacks in these, in these two linear areas. And one of those is, is within the buffer. The other one is out of the buffer, the other one's in the buffer, and I know that that's one, that's one of the issues that the staff has indicated that we need to address, and so we're prepared to do that. Wasn't clear to us when, when we met with staff before, but it's clear now that that, that this, this needs to be moved. The applicant also proposes to remove some of the pavement within that buffer in, in this area where it's closest to the residential property line. I believe this, this property owner was, was here at, at the last meeting and spoke that he was happy with the existing buffer and conditions, but nonetheless, the applicant is proposing to remove some pavement and plant some more pines in, in that area to make it even better. And so that's shown in this, in this striped area here. So all, all of this, this green line here is existing vegetation that's, that's obviously going to remain, and this is gonna be proposed additional plantings in this, in this area. So I think what, what I'd like to do then is, before, take questions, unless you want to interrupt me, feel free to, is to go through staff's proposed resolution and, and just clarify a few things, or just comment on them if I, if I.
Staff had several things, do you wanna?
Can I, can I go through each of them, or?
Right, that's what I was just gonna ask you to do.
Unless, Roger, you'd like to take the lead on that.
Well, I don't know how you want to do this, Mr. Chairman, but there is such as some general history of the site that I probably should put into the record for the benefit of those commissioners who weren't here over the last six months, as we've dealt with this site three or four times. So you want me to do that afterwards, and?
Right.
Okay.
He, I asked him.
I would, I would yield back to you, Dana.
There were seven comments that were in your October 6 letter to.
Well, right, right now, there, in the draft resolution, there was eight, A, B, C, D, and E, and I added a couple more today after visiting the site, so maybe I'll just put them in, and then you can comment on them.
Sure.
So there's a couple of inoperable trucks that are out there, and inoperable cars, and so, so just the, the suggestion was that we add a condition that there be no storage of inoperable or runt, registered vehicles or trucks on the site. And then there is a tractor trailer, not the front of the thing, but the actual trailer that's being used for outdoor storage. They've actually built stairs up to it, and it sits in the parking lot, so we ought to put a condition in there that tractor trailers will not be used for storage. And then the final thing I think the commission should consider is, when you wrote your outdoor storage regulations, and this was something that Commissioner Higley pointed out, is you didn't put in a height of the storage. So this is the first opportunity that the commission is actually reviewing outdoor storage, and maybe the second, so maybe you might want to consider how, how high that you would, that, that you believe would be appropriate for storage. So there's a 100-foot buffer, the, the other thing is, in discussions with the applicant today after a visit of the site, the buffer area, there's a difference between buffering and screening, and I think sometimes that gets confused. There is adequate screening on a lot of the areas, but a buffer, you know, provides some comfort to a residential property that you don't have a tractor trailer, you know, 10 feet off your, off your property line. Even though there would be a row of trees so that you couldn't see it, you're still gonna hear it and, and, and have the fumes and so forth. So the 100-foot buffer is not necessarily screening, although your, your, your regulations say it be landscaped appropriately. And I do think that the, the buffer areas here would, would not require, you know, heavy-duty landscaping, because I do believe there's adequate screening, so. And I just, the only other comment, just, with respect to intrusions into the buffer, at the time the cell tower was approved, that was, that was a residential zone, as you know, and this commission changed it within the last few months, and by changing it, actually provided more opportunities for outdoor storage. And when they do the revised submission, the, the parking table is calculated against usable floor area, and that's not the requirement of the regulations, it's gross leasable area, so that's just a redoing it. And then finally, I would just say that Dana says it's an application for the diesel motor vehicle. It's actually three special permit applications. One is to allow the, the, the motor vehicle truck repair. The second is the outdoor storage, which is a special permit in your regulations. And the third is the multi-purpose use, even though the application and everything refers to them as existing tenants, this would be an opportunity to actually issue a special permit for this site and make it a multi-purpose site, which up until this point, it has not been.
Thank you, Roger. May I continue?
Sure. No, go ahead.
So as I, as I look through, you, you mentioned the, the staff report before, but we believe that the revised plans that we submitted addressed those items. The items that weren't addressed got incorporated into this resolution. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so by, so by going through this resolution, we will be covering everything, except for the items that were mentioned. And I guess I'll just say the applicant is agreeable to, to removing any of those vehicles that are disabled from the site, and as far as a, a height, a height restriction, I guess we're open to hearing what's your thoughts. So I will say that the, the back portion there is, is, is used by Enfield Builders, who's, who's also associated with the, with the LLC that owns the property, and, and they, they storm it, earth materials sometimes, so those piles can get higher than, than, say, federal rent offense, which puts those stacks, those, those fence stuff, it may be 10 feet high. Does that sound, sound about right? About 10 feet high? Yeah. So, 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 I don't, I don't know where, where that's headed, but we're open to discussing that, that with you. Let me go through the, the resolution. Was there anything else, Roger, that I missed of the things you added there?
Other than to say, I think that we're, we're at a place that hopefully we can fashion a way to move this thing forward tonight, because we've all worked very hard to get us to this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that. So specifically on the, the resolution, I'd like to look at site-specific conditions, number eight, and there's A, B, C, D, and E listed. And so the first one is that the 100-foot buffer be shown on the plans, and as I pointed out with the yellow line, it is shown on the plan, so we feel we're in compliance with that, but we have no problem with it as, as a condition since, since we, since we have, we have it on the plan. It's certainly our intent to, to show that, that buffer line on, on the plan. Secondly, B, the buffer will be landscaped in accordance with zoning regulations, based on what Roger's, Roger's saying, that, that the, that the existing screening is basically adequate, and maybe some, a few additional plantings to, as, as he deems appropriate, and we're willing to work with him on that to provide, provide that. C, with exception to the entrance roadway, there will be no other uses allowed in, in the buffer area, specifically outside storage is not allowed in the buffer. So we're, we're agreeable to that, and the, and so that's gonna involve a change to the plan, as, as you saw from this, this plan, this, this orange strip here that federal rent offense has, is, is in that buffer, and so we'd have to move that. So that, so we understand that anything that's, 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 that's a stored material that's in the buffer has to, has to be moved out of the buffer, but not, you're not looking for the, the pavement to be removed or anything that's, that's, that's permanent on, on the ground. The, the parking table, number D, when, when we met with staff, we were told that the, because, because we looked in the regulations, there's no gross leasable area definition in, in your regulations, so. So, we asked, well, what, how do you define that? And they said it's basically the same thing as the, what do we call it, the usable floor area. So, we will update the parking table to have the correct label at the top, but the numbers aren't going to change unless I'm mistaken. And if it is, we'll...
Yeah, the gross leasable area is what is the lease for.
Right.
You know, how much space is the optometrist leasing?
Yeah.
It's not, you know, and that may be a higher number than what she would consider usable.
So, and then, finally, E, the applicant needs to obtain an easement from the state of Connecticut for parking shown in the state right of way or remove the spaces from the map. That's this area down here. We have a note saying 11 existing parking spaces. We didn't count them in our parking calculations, but we showed that they're there. We're going to remove that note. We're going to move the striping, and the pavement will stay there, but there'll be no, there'll be no parking shown in that area. So, there'll be no note, no striping in that area to clean that up. So, we're agreeable to do that. And then, the only other item was, number 21 requires a Class A-2 as-built survey plan. So, we've asked for a waiver of the A-2 requirement for the site plan. If you choose to grant that waiver, which we hope that you do, then it makes sense to not require it for the as-built either. If we were proposing to build a building or expand the parking or doing something that an as-built would show, then it would make sense to have an A-2. But if you agree with us that this is minor enough, that the A-2 is not needed, then we shouldn't need an A-2 for the as-built either. But that's, we certainly can still provide the certification that's required to confirm that all of these things that are done have been done according to the plan. So, that you'll still receive the assurance and the confirmation that all these things were done.
Well, wouldn't that be according to a plan? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Would that be according to a plan, though, that we don't have? That's the plan, as you're talking about revising?
It would be according to this plan.
That the commission wouldn't receive, though? Because there's a lot of revisions to this plan.
The commission doesn't receive any as-bills. It's just reviewed by staff administratively.
Okay.
Well, can I just clarify that? After this plan is corrected tonight, should you adopt it? Then, the applicant comes back and submits four copies of revised plan, which staff reviews and certifies to the board secretary that they are in accordance with your approval. The board secretary signs them on your behalf. And then, the as-built, when the as-built comes in, that is reviewed by staff, and then, unless there's some issue, that's handled administratively.
The board secretary is very careful on what he signs, so he's...
And also, all the conditions of approval are put right onto the cover sheet of the plan, so that it's all spelled out, so everyone understands what's required. So, that's my, those are my only, and they're not objections, they're just clarifications, our understanding of what those...
There was one other clarification for the commission. In your notes, it says you wanted approval of existing multi-tenant uses.
Yes, I did mention that originally, our application was just for the industrial diesel use, and as talking with staff, we've modified, we've amended our application to be for those other uses. And I don't know if you're going to want to do separate votes on those three items?
That's why I wanted to get there, because it looks like we may, and I don't know if we have a list of what those uses are that we're okay.
They're on the map.
They're on the map, on the parking table. All of the names of the businesses are listed there.
Oh, that's on the, okay.
There was also a letter provided that outlined, they give a description of what each of those do. If you'd like, I can go through that.
Okay.
Basically, they're either office or professional services or...
Well, I know the dentist we had, which was a professional, right.
Yeah, it's mostly office.
I know things have changed almost yearly or, you know, in and out, and I don't know if we're giving a blanket. Well, actually, we are giving a blanket okay to what's there. Okay. Any other questions for the commission?
I do have a question because I just like it to be consistent with all the other applications that we have. Hours of operations of this business? I don't see anything where, are they changing? I just want to make sure that we don't give this blanket okay, and then they're 24/7 because you do have residential area in that section.
So, in regard to the industrial, the new use, industrial diesel and driveline, in the cover letter that I submitted with the application on page two, second paragraph, which begins, "Industrial diesel and driveline is a heavy equipment repair garage." It lists the hours of operation Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to noon. So, that's the hours of operation that's in the record for the proposed use. As far as the existing uses, there's no changes being proposed. I don't know if that's adequate to...
Okay. Now, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any kind of changes that later we'll be hearing about.
Well, I would suspect that in emergencies, we'd expect a construction company would be in there. Possibly, the heavy equipment might have to be there. If you had some type of an emergency where the equipment was needed or used.
I'm not sure, but I will say that Kristy Selby from Industrial Diesel and Driveline is here, if you'd like to ask some specific questions about her business. And John Petronella is here representing the property owner, JFP Realty.
Mr. Chairman, the police traffic officer did raise the question of when the gate is open in his comments, and perhaps the applicant could address that because he was concerned about the gate being closed and traffic backing up into the street.
Well, I have one, before he comes up, I had one. And I was concerned, and I, there was, for example, we had from the police, we had the questions. We have no report from the fire department for some reason. And the engineering department had no concerns, and health said they had no concerns at this time. The one we don't have is water pollution control. And why I'm asking is, on page four, you show the garage floor plan, and there's a lot of floor drains. And the last time, I thought they didn't want floor drains in garages. And I don't know if this went to the water pollution control or not. I mean, I also see them in the locker room, which I would expect. And there is an oil-water separator, it doesn't say what it's connected to. I would imagine it's town sanitary sewers?
Yes, yes, there is an oil-water separator, and so, the floor drains, when you have floor drains, you're required to have an oil-water separator. This was required when the building was built, and so, it was used for repair garages, and it's, almost every repair garage has a floor drain and an oil-water separator. So, this is consistent with those uses.
Well, I know a couple of times that they, we've had some that have required the floor drains to be plugged or stopped. They didn't want floor drains.
Generally, if it's not hooked up to sewer, then yes.
The other thing is, on this, there's no maintenance schedule or inspection schedule for the oil-water separator.
While he's not up, I'll just tell you, there was an ART on this application, and in addition, after the plans were revised, they were circulated again to all departments. So, all departments have had two opportunities to comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe you're correct, Mr. Chairman. There's nothing listed there specifically. It's an existing oil-water separator that's been in existence, but we're happy to include a maintenance schedule on the plan, just document that that's...
It should be because, and make sure it's, so that it's followed. That should be added then to the conditions. Okay, thank you, Dana. Any further questions for the commission?
I have a couple, Dana. In terms of, you mentioned the fact that you're going to store earthen materials on the site. And, you know, normally, what happens is, when you get a significant rain, it has a tendency of washing, you know, materials off of piles and into driveways and into areas that aren't necessarily conducive to having, you know, contaminant runoffs or any kind of, you know, foreign material runoff.
You're worried about erosion?
Well, not only erosion, but, you know, just silt and, you know, discoloration of, you know, the wetlands. Because I think that there's some fragmities just on the state of Connecticut, you know, I-91 site where, you know, there's a collection area that is wetlands and...
We could add some, as we're talking about maintenance schedules, we could add some additional wording to the plan that those piles will be contained if need be, put down hay bales or cover it to control, to keep it from migrating.
Yeah, I think that would be a prudent thing to do. Because the only other question I have is that you mentioned the fact that, you know, I guess, you know, looking at the difference between buffering and screening, and I did take a look at your photographs, and, you know, and the only thing that I did notice is that, you know, a lot of the vegetation there that's used for screening is really sort of, you know, weeds and vines and invasive type of materials that necessarily aren't conducive to landscaping. They're just sort of, they're there only because, you know, they happen to be, you know, non-restrictive in terms of, you know, their proliferation.
Yes.
Yeah, and they just keep going and going and going. But, you know, eventually, what might happen is that, you know, I have a problem of using, you know, these, you know, non-controllable materials for screening, and I think that landscaping would be, you know, a better, you know, way of screening materials, only because you can control, you know, exactly what you're going to get, rather than to get some kind of random, you know, material to screen. And, you know, to supplement that is that you also mentioned the fact that you're not going to be removing the pavement in the areas, you know, of the buffer. And, you know, the only thing that I hesitate about is that, you know, if something is there and it can be used, normally, it is used. So, you know, I think that, you know, if, you know, we're trying to use it as a buffer, it should be really a buffer, and it really should have, you know, a non-acceptable, you know, platform on which it could possibly be used for a different use other than buffering. And, you know, so I have a problem of leaving, you know, pavement in a buffered area only because, you know, we're not going to be policing it, nobody's going to be looking at it, you know, 100, you know, 24/7, but, you know, we expect that, you know, you would be not using it, but there's never any guarantee that, you know, a responsible person, you know, is always watching what everybody else is doing so that, you know, something could be put somewhere even though it's not supposed to be put somewhere, only because nobody mentioned the fact that it can't go there. So, I think that, you know, I would like to sort of have that addressed.
Okay, well, we have offered to remove some of the pavement. There's a cost associated with this. These were, these are existing conditions, and I think that the applicant's hesitant to...
Could you put up some kind of a barrier in terms of, you know, you can leave the pavement there, but have a barrier that would prevent somebody from utilizing that space that's in the buffer? In terms of, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, something, you know, that's exotic, but, you know, basically, it could be, you know, maybe yellow striping that says, you know, don't, you know, or, you know, some kind of a, you know, plastic fence or something, or some kind of, you know, barrels that are, you know, spaced at a certain distance that would prevent somebody from using that area. And it would delineate, you know, a buffered area from a storage area.
Fencing?
It would work out with...
Federal rent-a-fence right on site there. I think we could work out some kind of a barrier, yeah.
Yeah.
If I could comment, I think if you put up plastic fencing or something, that'll disappear over time, too. I mean, you've got to dig a trench down the middle wide enough to hold trees and put some, put something in that, that'll say on the other side of these, whatever you want there is buffer.
Right, and it's just that delineation where that, you know, because the final question I have, and I think that, you know, we're looking at, you know, the amount of storage that is available for the site. And, you know, I, and again, I'm not 100% sure, but, you know, are we using buffered areas as part of the rear lot to calculate storage area, or are we ignoring the buffered areas in terms of, you know, lot size calculations?
Your regulations do not exclude buffers from that calculation. So, yeah, they are included.
There is one thing here, which is that your regulations say that the storage has to be in the rear yard, it doesn't allow it to be in the side yard. And so, if you look at this, is this the rear yard or is that the side yard?
Yeah, we interpreted that it's behind the building, so it's rear. Your rear yard is all the space that's behind the back part of the building. Everything, the rest of that is all rear yard.
Any further questions?
I guess I had a question about going on the, sort of the screening versus buffer discussion. It appears from the plans that a lot of the screening vegetation is not located on the applicant's property, but rather is located on the abutting property. And so, I wonder, you know, if this requires a type D buffer in which there's, you know, screening-like plantings involved, suppose the property owner next door decides one day, I want to cut down the trees on my own property and use my own property for my own self. If we don't require the type D buffer plans now in that space, can we, are we sure it's harmonious to be next door to a residential?
Well, you have the property owner next door came to the meeting, said he's happy with the way that it is. I don't think he has any intentions of taking that down. I think he likes it the way that it is.
The next owner, Mike.
Well, the next owner, do we know what the next owner might want to do? If there is a next owner? It's just a comment, I guess I don't know.
I guess that would be their choice. I mean, if they wanted to do that, they would be doing it, knowing what it would be.
Because, again, you know, again, just to supplement that in terms of, you know, I think that, you know, the land is, you know, and I imagine that this establishment is going to be there for another 50 years, let's say. And, you know, you would have to believe that, you know, the current owner of the property is not going to be the current owner for another 50 years. You know, there will be some turnover, and that, you know, what we need to do is look at long-term, you know, what the requirements are, only because it could become a problem at a future date in accordance with, if he wanted to do, all of a sudden, he wanted to farming there, and all of a sudden, he did need to remove, or he could remove those trees, you know, or put, you know, some kind of a vegetation plot there that, you know, then all of a sudden, you know, that buffer or that screening, you know, will be sort of not there.
Sure. We don't have any control of what someone does on another property.
The point?
The point is, is that all the vegetation is over here. Let's cut down.
Right, and that's all vegetation that's not on the applicant's property.
So, you may want to consider, if this row of trees here, you might want to extend it down here and run it over there.
And I think that would be closer to the D buffer yard that's required here, which requires trees that would provide both a buffer and screening.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Just keep in mind, this applicant, I mean, the property owner bought this property 20 years ago, this is how it looked then. He hasn't changed anything. He's just been using it. And now that a new use wants to come in, suddenly, he's got to remove all this. We're trying to work with you, be reasonable, maybe we can do a little more. John, you want to?
Yeah, I know. Hi, I'm John Petronella for the owner, JFP Realty, and just as a point, going down the driveway here, there's a row of tall white pines that are here now. Those, I believe, are on our property, although it's not depicted here. And it's a very tall, they're fully grown, and they're, I don't know, they're 30 or 40 feet tall, and they go all the way down. And what we showed here, what Dana has shown here, is another, to continue that row of white pines, a little bit further here in that buffer area.
Mr. Petronella, Dana's map shows them, I saw on the other.
I know he doesn't, I think he's wrong in that.
If we had an A2 survey, we'd...
And also, with the property owner, and I had to repair some fencing back in here that was down, and the property owner specifically came out and asked what we were doing, and I said, "Well, I have to repair this fencing because it's laying down." And he was, he made sure that we would not cut down any of this vegetation because it was so thick and grown in here, and I promised him that we would not cut it down, we would just cut down what we needed, about four feet wide, to repair the fence and put it back up. And we did that, actually all the way across here to the west side, and then along this north side, we repaired some fencing. And again, he was here, the property owner, last meeting and spoke for that, and we have a very good relationship with him as well. So I mean, we could certainly spot those trees and make sure of where they are and show them, but there is a row of white pines from the property line on the street that extend all the way down to where the gate area is, and comes out like this, it's depicted there, but I think that this is shown wrong.
Dana, was he to explain the fence? The question by the police department on the fence, being open or closed, or the gate?
Oh, yeah, you want to address that, John?
As long as he's up there by the microphone.
Yeah, which fence and gate area?
It was a gate down on Depot Hill Road, I believe.
Was it the one furthest to the west?
There's two gated driveways.
Yeah. Yeah.
When those are locked from the road.
Well, generally, this gate is closed at night and on weekends as this one here. This gate here is open and closed as needed for the back area. What we try to do is restrict all the truck traffic and even any commercial traffic from anything from back in here to use this gate, which would be the furthest west, and to keep them off of Route 5, so to have them go to Depot Hill Road. So that gate, it can be open periodically, different hours of the day, and sometimes it's, maybe it's left open, I'm not sure, but during the day it's usually open, and then at night it's supposed to be closed and open as needed.
I don't know if that would cover what he wanted to know, I guess...
I guess, just reading it, and I'll read it verbatim, "Would the existing gate on Depot Hill Road entrance for trucks be left in an open position during business hours? If this gate were left closed, it would take time to open for each truck, and that would likely result in a truck waiting on Depot Hill Road, or at least partially in a roadway." So basically, if it's not open, you'd be blocking traffic for every single truck that was coming in, and I think that was a traffic concern for the police department. And it's either going to be open, or it's going to be closed, or he's not going to be happy, so...
He wants it open.
He wants it open. And that's what he's saying.
I don't have a problem with leaving it open, because I think most of the time it is open for that reason.
And they know trucks are coming in?
Yeah, yeah. Again, we restrict the traffic for any trucks or heavy traffic to that gate specifically. I purposely keep them off of the main entrance on Route 5, because some years ago, I had discussions with the neighbors across the street, and my own trucks were going out of there at 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, and they make noise, and there was some children in the houses there, making noises and so forth. So I purposely restricted the traffic to Depot Hill Road, just to keep the neighbors satisfied. I'm always trying to work with them if that's possible. So we can do that. I don't have any issue with keeping that gate open at all times, if that's what the commission prefers, and the traffic safety guide does.
Or at least during the hours of operation, when the site's being used. If it's not being used, then it's fine. It's got to be open all the time when there's activity on the site.
From what's written, that's all...
I know it's open during the day all the time. At nighttime, I thought, when he was done, that he closed the gate.
Yeah. Because just to piggyback on that, in terms of, the police department had another comment in terms of, and I'll read it verbatim again, "The submitted plans show turning movements for tractor-trailers. These plans show a very tight right-hand turn onto Depot Hill Road entrance for tractor-trailers. It would appear to me that this entrance would need to be widened for the purpose to avoid damage to curbing and landscaping there." So I guess he has another concern about that gate.
Okay, I think what's happening, here's the plan that he's referring to, and these are the, you can see the truck turning movements on here. This is a truck that's entering the site, and it swings in and it doesn't cross over the property lines. This one here is not a truck entering the site, it's the truck leaving the site, and it needs to swing out to the opposite lane, so that it's, you know what I'm saying? So there's a center line here in the road, so I think maybe what he's thinking is that this is a truck out here that's way out and trying to come in, but that's not the case. The truck is pointing in this direction. So there's no issue with truck access to that driveway, and I think the plan demonstrates that.
Okay, well, if he's done his figuring.
Yeah, if I may, also, this is not a trucking terminal, if you will, there's not a whole lot of traffic going in and out of that gate in terms of, on a daily basis. There's probably less than a dozen trips in and out of there. Again, it's not a terminal where it's freight being transferred in and out and on the site, so it is very limited.
Okay, anything further before I open the public?
I just had one question. We've made so many changes to the regulations, I'm probably not seeing it, but it says here that the outside storage, this is in industrial, the outside storage, where is it, permitted in an industrial zone, it's limited to 20%, I don't care about that, but it says, "Any outdoor storage must be directly connected to activities conducted inside the buildings." So I'm wondering, it says outdoor storage must be in a defined areas and not scattered about or throughout the site. So how do we apply that?
Yeah, that was a concern, and it's really in multiple defined areas. So that's an interpretation the commission's going to have to make. I know that Commissioner Ladd was the one who put that requirement in at the time you wrote the regulations, he's not here tonight, but the notion was you didn't want the entire back portion scattered about. So I really, I mean, it's a good point, and you ought to consider it, and if the applicant has any suggestions as to how he could consolidate it and not have it in multiple locations, that would be helpful.
I have a thought. It's a corner lot, for all intents and purposes. They could always go to zoning board of appeals and get a variance so that they, because you couldn't have it where the book says you need to have it. So that's your hardship.
I think the applicant would like to finish tonight.
Well, I'd like him to finish tonight, too, but you've got to adhere to your zoning regs.
I'm saying, so you might want to have some conversation with the applicant and come to some conclusion that you're comfortable with. If you're not, you're not, Commissioner, but I'm just saying that, because basically what you have in front of you is an interpretation of your regulations, and you go over to the ZBA, and they're going to say, "Well, what did that regulation mean?" And it's your regulation, and you have to interpret whether what you see on the map meets that regulation. Because it's not something like, you can only have 12 trucks in the backyard, and you want to put 20. This is a question of, is the outdoor storage as shown on the map consistent with not scattered about, but concentrated?
Well, to me, it does appear that it is consolidated by, you've got so many different companies or people there, and each one has his outside storage or area for that, and in that way, it is consolidated.
But do we know which of the tenants is, I mean, I don't know that it matters right now, but do we know which of the tenants is using which storage?
Yeah, so he just pointed out earlier, Dana had, with the fence companies section, you can go and do that now.
I can go over that again. So again, we did try to consolidate as much as possible. One of the things that your regulations also say is there has to be access to it. So if we just consolidated this all into one giant glob here, you're not going to be able to get at it. So you need to have it spread out a little bit in order to get around and access it. So we believe that with this aisle that we have coming around to access it, things are neat and organized. So to answer your question, these areas here are for the federal rent offense. This one here that's in the buffer, we're going to move probably up to this area, to the back here, so that it's out of the buffer. And these areas are used by Enfield builders, and I think these loading docks are part of Whining Brook. So those are the three uses that use the outside storage, Whining Brook, Enfield builders, and federal rent offense. Those are the three right now that are using outside storage.
And what's the one up at the north part?
This one here?
Yeah.
There's, I don't think this area's really being used right now, but it's an area that we designated that could be used probably by Enfield builders.
Would...
Same with this area here.
Would you move the, there's a dock outside storage area, and in the assistant planner's memo, she stated that you couldn't have outside storage on dock areas, so...
Oh, yeah, she was referring, I'm sorry, she was referring to this dock up here, near the front.
Yep.
If any of you saw the photos, there are two storage containers sitting on top of this dock, and they were there 20 years ago when he bought the place, and they are used for storage, and he's agreed to move those. And there's a note on the plan that says that those will be removed.
Oh, okay, because...
It's right here.
Is that number four? Somebody marked up all the...
That's the area right there.
Okay, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about the...
Yeah, these lower ones here?
Yes, yes.
Those, I don't believe were what staff was referring to, so they didn't explain that these were a problem.
Well, I think she said that outside storage was not allowed on dock areas, correct?
That's not right.
So, but you have plenty, I'm sorry, but you have plenty of room.
It's not a problem to have it on a dock area, it's a problem to have it on a dock area where the dock is in the wrong place.
Yep.
When the dock's in the wrong location, then you can't have it on a dock area. There's nothing inherently bad about a dock, it's just this particular dock happens to be in front of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the regulations don't allow it for it to be on top of a loading dock, and that was the point, and wherever it was on a loading dock, it had to be taken off of the loading dock.
So these...
They'd have to be relocated, right.
These areas here?
Right.
But that's okay, because you have the extra storage area that's quite close to them, that you said you were kind of holding off on using it at future date.
Well, the trucks come in here, they unload the material, load it back onto the next one.
If they do, but they don't really transfer freight.
That's what the dock would be for, though.
Yeah, that's what CLMP used it for.
Right, so it's a CLMP thing.
Yeah.
How do you feel about that, John? Removing these outside storage areas?
I'm not sure really, is there some materials on there now? Is that what we're talking about, what's on there now has to be moved down to a lower...
Right, so the dock's a loading dock and not a repository for outdoor storage containers.
Right, we can move that to the storage areas defined on the plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before I open the public? Okay, thank you, Dana, thank you, John.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Last call, anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application?
Does the applicant for the automotive vehicle thing want to speak in favor of her application?
Apparently not, she has an answer. Roger?
She's the applicant for the motor vehicle thing. You focused on what John was doing, but she's the garage, so if you have any questions for her.
Hi, I'm Kristy Selby, I'm the owner of Industrial Diesel and Driveline. It's been a long road, but hopefully we'll be able to move forward from here.
Any questions?
I think it was on, I think you just have to move the...
She speaks closer to it.
How's that, is that better? Okay.
Any questions for her?
Are you doing the large vehicles services?
Heavy equipment, trucks, construction equipment.
Well, it's well, I'm sure it'll be well received in Enfield.
Sorry, I'm sure it'll be well received in Enfield, because there aren't too many places that do that.
That was one of the big reasons for choosing Enfield.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against? Thank you, that's...
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against? Last call to speak in favor against Roger's comments.
In the draft resolution you had, there was A, B, C, D, and E, the ones I wrote down. F would be no storage of inoperable or unregistered vehicles or trucks. G is tractor-trailers are not used for storage. And the issue of the height, I'll put something out there, storage will not be hired in 15 feet, you can, so that's, and then the next one is oil and water separator maintenance schedule to be added to the plan. The outdoor storage of materials will be stabilized appropriately, so as not to cause siltation or runoff. The Depot Hill Road gate will be open during hours of operation, and the last one, which was discussed, was pavement in the buffer area to be removed, so that may require more discussion.
Or delineated, in terms of, it has...
Or delineated, so you don't, the storage doesn't just wander across.
Right, correct.
Was there also a discussion about more planting on that side area, or was that something in the...
Right, and so then you, the commission discussed, but it wasn't clear what you wanted to do, so you might want to also consider the plantings that are actually on the property.
That was a major problem, there's some there.
Because the ones that are there, according to the Class D survey submitted, are shown as on the adjacent property.
Yeah, and in terms of, I think that item B says, shall be in accordance with zoning regulations, and if we sort of just expand item B to landscaped and delineated in accordance with zoning regulations, that that would be adequate.
Okay, now, the applicant, have you seen the requirements or the conditions?
Yes.
Any problems with them, or the additions?
Only what we've already discussed. One, I will add, the discussion about... One, I will add, the discussion about what to do with the pavement in the buffers, we would propose to provide a concrete barrier, like a Jersey barrier, or concrete blocks, you can't get past those, that would provide a... Right, something that would delineate it. A substantial barrier.
Okay, that's just understood, that doesn't have to be written down, whatever you've got there, okay. So you have no problems then? Anyone, any reasons you want me to keep it open?
I just would like to say with respect to that, is the buffer area on a prior applicant, you did require paving to be taken up and plantings to be put in and that was a recent meeting and so just in terms of consistency, I'd just point that out to the commission.
And again, that's one of the reasons why I did bring it up in terms of, you know, we did have them remove everything and, you know...
Were they proposing a new building or?
Yeah, I mean, it was the same situation, paved parking lot had to be a buffer and the pavement is being taken up and grass being put down.
What I was asking, was the application, it involve a building addition, a building construction?
No.
No, it was, change of use.
Exact same thing, change of use.
Just change of use.
Basically.
Right. So, you know, in that sense, you know, I think that to be consistent, we really need, we can't show favoritism one way or another, that we need to be consistent.
So, yeah, in that case, I'd say you should really pull it out.
The, this application, if I may, this application is for a use, it's really for a license, for Department of Motor Vehicle license, for a repair license. The applicant, Industrial Diesel, they're looking at a 5,000 square foot building on this site, which is about, represents probably less than 10% of what the overall site is. And to bring this whole site into compliance, into zoning compliance, would constitute a land taking and that's something that, when we started off, we were not going to, we did not propose any improvements and we're still not, we still weren't proposing any improvements. And where this is going in the last year of discussing this is, it keeps getting chipped away, chipped away, chipped away, where, you know, again, for what's there, for what the application is really looking for, again, a license, a DMV license, it doesn't make any sense for us, the owner, the landowner, to bring the site into compliance and to do all of these improvements for what we consider a small portion of the property and a small lease to the property. So I think what the other applicant was looking at, or the other application referred to, was a large industrial warehouse. That was changing the entire property and the zone application was for the whole building on the site, so to compare that to this, I think is two different things.
I guess, you know, what we have to view is that this is actually three separate applications in terms of, it is a multi-use, mixed-use, you know, application. So there's one area that we're trying to get into compliance and then the outdoor storage is another area trying to get into compliance. So that, it is, you know, more complicated than just, you know, the approval of a motor vehicle repair garage. So, you know, it's really the other two aspects that are sort of driving, you know, the requirement and, you know, again, just to be fair to, you know, everybody involved, you know, if there was some way to ensure that, you know, we aren't, you know, because I guess the only other, we could never be sure that they couldn't be parking trucks adjacent in that parking area because it was next to a residential area. And that was the only way that we could ensure that because we weren't going to be policing it ourselves. So that, you know, we, if we possibly receive some assurance that, you know, in fact, you know, this will never happen, that, you know, you will never approach on that area, and I don't know how anybody can ever guarantee that it will never happen, only because, you know, it, you know, people of responsible charge aren't always noticing what's going on in the daily functions of a larger mixed-use, multi-use, you know, system where, you know, something happens and somebody just says, "Oh, just put it there, don't worry about it," and then everybody forgets that it's not supposed to be there. And how do we, you know, sort of, you know, ensure that that doesn't happen, especially in that kind of a zone?
If he puts up the Jersey barriers and they're there, the amicite is going to deteriorate And if someone comes along and removes another owner or something, removes the Jersey barriers, well, and the construction company's been there, Petronas has been there, what, you said, 20 years, and I imagine they'll be there a few more years.
Yeah, we hope.
I don't see the amicite lasting that long and with the Jersey barriers there, somebody will see them if they're moved and nobody's going to go back in there and repair that. If they come back in, you have another chance to get them to take it out. Because maybe if there is another owner, or should ever be another owner, somebody will have a chance.
But that's if, that's if there's something that they do that requires them to come before the commission.
Right.
And they might not.
Oh, that's true, but sometimes you, you can't get the whole...
Mr. Chairman, are you under discussion now as the public hearing closed?
Well, I've been trying to close it and I haven't gotten there yet.
I'm just saying is that, you know, at some point, the applicant's got a vacate and then you have your discussion.
I know, I know that, but...
I mean, the applicant can't participate under the rules in your discussion.
No, but they're asking questions of the applicant, I mean, the applicant wishes to answer and I can't stop it. All I'm saying is, you want a piece of the whole pie or you want to take a piece of it at a time and correct something a little bit at a time? I mean, we've taken little pieces before and the towers and some of the other, I remember the time with a pellet company and so forth that we had, so that's up to you. And that could be a discussion later if I can get the meeting closed.
But under a special permit, Mr. Chairman, the applicant does not have to agree to your conditions of approval. The applicant will only have to agree to your conditions of approval on a site plan. This is three special permits, health, welfare, and public safety, and so you have complete discretion in accordance with health, welfare, and public safety.
But I'll never get there unless I can close the meeting. You finished the applicant, any questions again for the applicant? Any statements now for what's in the conditions now, do you have any problems?
With respect to the tractor trailers not for storage, what were proposed and what your regulations call for is storage, tractor trailers that are there could have materials in there for storage and I'm not sure that I understand, we want to store tractor trailers there and now you're saying that we can't have storage in there. I'm not sure that I understand what...
Well, for example, if you have, I can't use an example, let's say, some company wishes to store a material there and they bring your vehicle in loaded with their Christmas, let's say, stock for next year, then they put it in a trailer and you put it on your property.
Right.
The tractor trailers that are in the application are tractor trailers where the company comes in and the drivers come in, they park their cars, they get the tractor trailers and they go out. The tractor trailers that are subject to not being there is, there are some trailers that are sitting there that they have built steps up to and they're really just a, you know, an accessory building that's not on the tax rolls.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a big difference between tractor trailers that are driven in and driven out as opposed to those that sit there and weeds grow up around the wheels.
Well, I'm not aware that there's something there, I am aware that there's a trailer there that has a set of steps up to it and that is a unit that's typically not stationary, where there shouldn't be weeds growing there, but if that's your definition of it, yeah. I don't want anything that's stationary with weeds growing up there, I'm trying to keep it neat, but that's the understanding that I was asking to what that definition is. As far as the height for 15 feet for outside storage, I don't have an issue with that, unless it's a stockpile area. We've had stockpile of topsoil there that maybe exceeds that, but 15 feet, I think, would be, we'd be agreeable to. As far as stabilizing for earth and materials, absolutely not a problem with that. We would put in silt fence or hay bales or whatever would be required, we don't want erosion problems, so we don't have an issue with that. The condition of the gate being open during hours of operation, again, no issue there, we take no exception to that. And absolutely no issue with us to remove any disabled vehicles, we don't want a junkyard there. I know that we had a pickup truck that was there not too long ago that was removed, it was a tenant that we removed, he left the pickup truck there, it was abandoned, it was not registered and things were growing around it, but we eventually got that removed. I'm not sure that there's anything more there. If there is, I certainly have no issue with complying with not having abandoned vehicles there. Again, we would have those removed, so no issue there. As far as any maintenance with respect to the oil-water separator, we certainly comply with a note on there that would have to be, you know, regularly maintained and so forth.
That would be industrial diesels.
Yeah, and that would usually, that's a standard procedure anyway, I think that would be on there, so we don't have any issue with putting a note on that.
So I think, I think we're good. I think the only question was whether that pavement's going to be removed or if those Jersey barriers would be adequate. We just ask for you to please consider the circumstances of this application and work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, so much has gone on, anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or against? Again, anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or against? Last call to speak in favor or against? Again, Roger, close 2878.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a resolution?
A motion.
A motion, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to accept, I guess, pub...
Hold on, wait a minute, hold on. Roger, just let me check, first, we need to have a vote on a waiver of the survey, A2 survey.
That's correct.
So that would be the first motion.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the A2 survey for public hearing 2878, 1654 King Street?
Second.
Motion's made second, any discussion?
Well, I had a, I guess, a comment, which is, there's been a lot of reference to what's currently there but not reflected on the map and at some point, it's getting hard to keep track. At least, you know, obviously I've been focused on the buffer next to that driveway in and I was informed tonight that there are pines there, but again, it's not reflected on the map and that's of concern to me particularly because the screening that's currently there is not on the applicant's property. So I think there are some benefits, I think many benefits to having an A2 and that's my concern.
And I would agree with you in terms of, you know, I think that, you know, it, you know, obviously, you know, the surveyor who's utilizing somebody else's map should do due diligence and actually go out there and look at, is he accurately reflecting what is there? But I think that, you know, the cost of an A2 survey on an existing, you know, facility that is having some modifications but not significant, you know, remedial work or significant work being done, you know, is sort of, you know, possibly, you know, out of the realm of, you know, doing, you know, such an extensive research project for something that is existing. So, you know, I think that, you know, they need to go back and do their due diligence, you know, and they will have to do an as-built that reflects, you know, some of the improvements that they have made. And at that point, hopefully, they will upgrade their drawing so that it does, you know, more or less accurately reflect what's there rather than a cartoon drawing that we might see right now.
I'm sure that Roger will make sure that it's done or you will as before you sign.
So is the intent of the motion to also, as Dana pointed out, and the conditions of approval require the as-built be A2, so in waiving the A2 on the application, are you also waiving the A2 on the as-built or would you want an A2 on the as-built?
Well, I think that, you know, again, you know, I think that, you know, they need to do their due diligence in terms of, you know, and again, I'm not sure that how we can ensure that or, you know, enforce that, that, you know, it has to accurately reflect, you know, what is being, what is there and what is being done or what has been done. So, you know, and again, you know, I would have to believe that, you know, JR Russo are professional engineers and professional surveyors and they should have, you know, the manpower to at least get fairly close to what they should be doing and, you know, they can't necessarily take verbatim without verifying some of the things in the field, they need to actually check things in the field rather than just accept things that somebody might have shown before. And as a professional, I think that, you know, that is part of their ethics, that they, they need to do, you know, a better job at showing what is actually there rather than just, you know, accepting something that, you know, and just throwing things on a drawing. But, you know, that's what I believe and I, hopefully, this is an eye-opener for them that they, you know, will take this to heart, that they need to do things like that.
Dog, somebody called for a vote, the discussion's still going on.
I don't have any...
Somebody move the question? Do something.
I'd like to call for a vote on the issue?
Move the question, okay.
Can't move the question.
Move the question.
All in favor and the waiver, as I understand it, is for the submission. Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, wait a minute, who's?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, I'm sorry, six, four, and...
Two against.
One against and no abstentions. Please make sure the vote, the way the votes are listed in the, okay, now, should also be a vote on approval of existing multi-tenant uses as a request, I would understand, is that correct, Roger?
I mean, the commission could vote on all three of them if you wanted to do that, but I think that the resolution recognizes that you have three separate special permits and I've always taken the position that once you have a special permit, everything is part of that special permit. So this, the way this is crafted, you're approving a multi-tenant building, outdoor storage, and the... storage, and the motor vehicle, the expansion of the motor vehicle on the back from serving the trucks that belong there to allowing it to serve trucks from the public.
If you think it's in there.
Yep, we'll do your center.
Okay, that's included then in the first. Just want to make sure we cover what is requested.
Is this vote that we're going to take now separate from the A2 one that we've already done?
Well, the way this, you have to figure out what you're doing on the, the one item that is, remains, you have to figure out what you're doing on the pavement, and then you have the question of, are you requiring on number?
That depends on the person that reads, makes a motion, does it.
Yeah, on 21, you have the A2 survey.
And that could be taken up under the discussion when we get there, if a motion is made.
If I could be allowed just one comment on the Jersey barriers, I'm not sure the Jersey barriers meet the spirit of a buffer zone and perhaps a row of trees that demar kicks the pavement on the other side might be more in keeping with the spirit of a buffer zone.
Well, okay, that's fine. The planting of trees.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application for public hearing.
No. We approve.
We approve. We approve the application for public hearing 2878, 1654 King Street, MAP 13, Lot 9, JEP Realty LLC owner, whereas the Town of Enfield Planning Zoning Commission has reviewed an application for a special permit for a mixed-use, multi-use center, including office industrial, outdoor storage, and a motor vehicle repair garage at 1564 King Street, MAP 13, Lot 9, Industrial Residential Zones I-1R-33, and whereas a public hearing was opened on October 19th, 2017, and continued to November 2nd, 2017, and whereas the commission finds that with modifications included in the conditions of approval, the proposal is consistent with the Enfield zoning regulations, and whereas outdoor storage requires a special permit and is limited to 20% of the rear yard of the facility, and whereas the regulations require a buffer area between industrial zone properties and residential zone properties, and whereas the automotive use requires both a permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission and a location approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals, whereas this special permit will bring the site into zoning compliance, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Enfield Planning Zoning Commission hereby approves application, public hearing 2878 for a special permit for a multi-use center, including outdoor storage and a motor vehicle repair garage at 1654 King Street, MAP 13, Lot 9, Industrial and Residential Zones I-2R-33, with the following five modifications and 28 standard conditions of approval. And what we did add, looking at the site-specific conditions, there is, the way I listed it might be a little different than the way Roger listed it, but, you know, inoperable vehicles must be removed as F, and trailers cannot be used for storage as G. The height of the storage materials shall be a 15 feet maximum, which is H. I is a maintenance schedule, shall be shown on plan for the oil-water separator. J is that the outdoor storage shall be protected from erosion and, you know, infiltration with, you know, sedimentary control measures. K is the depot hill gate shall remain open during business hours, and as L, I have the hours of operation for the motor repair garage will be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday from 7:00 to noon, I believe. And in terms of addressing condition 21, you know, I'm of the opinion that, you know, seeing that we did not require a Class II, you know, survey for, you know, the site survey, and that it is an existing condition that they should not be required to provide a Class A2 survey for the as-bills, but I think that they need to actually make a conscious effort to verify exactly what is there and to locate things in accordance with, you know, appropriate survey measures, not necessarily Class A2 accuracy, but accurate enough to reflect with the conditions that exist.
Second.
Under your resolve, there was 11 modifications then.
All right.
Just a technical.
And you'd want to change the, you said, industrial and residential zones, so it should just be all I2 if I'm not mistaken.
There's no residential on the property.
You changed the?
Yeah.
It's a couple places. And there's two areas.
There's two areas there.
First paragraph and the bottom paragraph has to get changed.
And then the buffer zone, we still?
Well, the way the resolution was, the motion was made seconded, you go back to the condition 8B, which says the buffer will be landscaped in accordance with the zoning regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So I guess the item of discussion for that A2 would be, you know, whether we were going to require the total removal of the paving or possibly just a removal of a paving along that delineation line that would allow for the planting of trees in accordance with the zoning regulations. And the only, I'll offer one opinion in terms of, you know, basically, what happens is we have, you know, one abutting residential property owner in this location, whereas, you know, the previous application had a significant amount of residential properties that affected a considerable number of households, so that, and the proximity of the households on the other property were very close to the buffered area versus this has a significant backyard area and setback from, you know, the actual, you know, residential house that's there. So I would be, I would be...
So what's your reading of B, though, Roger?
So I think it still says that the buffer shall be landscaped and delineated, you know, in accordance with zoning regulations, and the delineation could amount to the removal of the pavement at the 100-foot buffer zone, and a row of trees be placed along that line.
That should be the verbiage there on B, then.
Correct.
Now, does that include the, how does that apply to the storage that's set forth that's within that buffer zone?
Well, that gets moved. It's not all in, it's not all, everything gets moved out.
Thank you.
Was there a second to that?
I seconded.
The only other question I have is, just so we're clear, is we're not doing these trees. We're removing those trees there. Or you, the trees are up here or there, so are you doing any trees here? The issue was, Mr. Petronello believes those trees are on him. The map submitted shows they're actually on the other property.
Well, those are the trees, but he said there were pines also that are on him.
Yeah, again, I think that we would go back to our regulations. If there are no trees along that buffered area, then we will add trees. If there are trees along that buffered area, then we would not have to add trees along that roadway.
We know there are trees. The question is, whose property is it?
Right. Well, I think they need to be on his property.
And I think wouldn't that fall within B that says the buffer will be landscaped in accordance with zoning regulations? So if it's not currently landscaped, i.e. if there's currently not trees there, he would have to add trees there. That's how I interpret it.
Okay, anything further? Okay, if you're ready to vote, then, and it's been seconded, so. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. No, so that means there's no opposed and no abstentions. I think we're done, Attorney Fahey and Mr. Petronello and Dana.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a long process for you and us. Okay. I'll give them a few seconds and we'll get going on Woodlawn Street.
Mr. Chairman, that was a short item on the agenda tonight.
I know, that's what you told me.
Nine o'clock is coming up.
Why, is that your bedtime?
Nine o'clock's my bedtime. That's right.
Next week it'll only be eight o'clock, though.
So you turn into a witch.
Last night it was six o'clock.
Okay. Secretary, take the roll and read the legal notice. We did last time, this is a continuation, so just take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Charles Lattis absent. Nicholas Lefakis.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Camille Salazar.
Here.
Richard Suzak is here.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in on the application. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Okszwa Kuharczyk. I live in Three Woodland Street, and maybe my son can help me.
Sorry, my mom's a little stressed. My name is Kristof Kuharczyk. I live on Three Woodland Street. I'm her son, and I want to help her answer questions with the home daycare situation.
Okay, would you have a piece of paper? Can you give them a piece of paper so they can spell the name for the secretary? Both names. Thank you very much. Well, I guess, when you come back and sit down and you explain what your mother is planning to do, and Secretary, the commission will be asking questions, I would imagine. Can you explain what your mother plans to do?
She'd like to have a home daycare for up to six kids, zero through, a newborn to six-year-olds, six-year-old, only up to six, no more than that, and it's going to be, all the activities would be in the basement and in the backyard. The basement is in very good condition. It's very well lit, very well ventilated. It's got two exits. She has 30 years of experience dealing with kids. She was a teacher in Poland for 15 years, and she's been teaching Polish school in Hartford for the last 15 years. So I feel like she's very good for the role to deal with kids.
Questions from the commission?
I guess you just answered that children's age is from birth to six years old, and she'd be the only person there.
She would be the person in charge, and I would be a substitute possibly.
Okay, so, because it says one employee, that's why I'm asking.
If she had an emergency, I guess I am certified with the same standards as she is. I'm not going to be working ever, but in case of an emergency, there's a backup.
The reason I'm asking is if there were an emergency and they had to take the children out, an infant or a one-year-old or two-year-old trying to get up those stairs, even though it's just a bulkhead, trying to open the bulkhead, get the children out, I think, is there, you know, a contingency in how to get out of that basement? You're kind of confined. Fire's going to go up. It's not going to go down first. So that's a concern that we have, is the children, being able to get the children out in case there was an emergency.
Would we be able to modify the exit? Hello, or?
I'm asking you. I, you're the property owner. I can't make your modifications, so. So that you could walk out instead of trying to open a bulkhead, trying to, because I've lived in a house with a bulkhead, and you're trying to open it, it's a metal door, you have to open it, you're going to have to open that door according to your pictures, and then open the bulkhead door, and then take the six children out, and if some of them aren't walking, you're going to have to assist them. So that's a concern where you could open a door and let them all go walk out easily instead of climbing stairs. I'm just asking if there's a way to do that.
There's about six stairs, and it's spring-loaded, and I don't think it's that hard to open, personally, but I see the concern, though.
It's not, you know, doing it by yourself with nothing in your hands or having a couple of squirming children is easy, but it could be a big issue.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you explain to me where people would turn around on your street to drop off the kids in the morning?
There's a loop around from Star Lane onto Woodlawn and back onto Hillcar, so there's no need to turn around. You can just go straight through if you need it.
Is there much traffic on that street? I mean, do people zip along?
No, not really. Just people leaving for work about the same time that we'd open and close. When I work second shift, I leave at 5:00, 5:00 p.m., and I work till 5:00 a.m., so about the same time, so there's no really extra traffic in different hours of the day.
Does it ever get backed up around the time?
There's four houses on each side of the street, so there's really not much traffic at all. It's not a busy street, and we made room on the driveway now, so I moved my car into the garage, and now there's only two, up to three cars in the driveway, so if somebody has to get out, because I watched the video from last, two weeks ago, because we weren't aware that we're supposed to be at the meeting, I'm sorry about that. We weren't really informed about it, so that's why we're here. We made the room for safer getting out, I guess, so it's not on the street, even though the street is not too busy, but now there will, there will be room on the driveway.
Well, it would depend on what side of the street you came down. One, they'd have to cross the street, which really, you don't know if it's safe or not safe, because you don't control the traffic, it's not a one-way street. And really, the preference of the regulations is that they have a safe place to exit the car, which would be in your driveway. And when I went by, there were four cars in that driveway. You couldn't squeeze anything in there.
Not for the last two weeks or so, I think. I think about a week and a half, I cleaned out the garage and moved my car, and so there's less than three every day now.
Less than three?
So there's at least one or two spots open.
Depending, then it sort of depends on what side of the driveway you're parking on.
We're always parking against the fence towards the neighbor, so we're getting out right next to the door.
I see.
Sorry, just wanted to clarify, either way you exit, enter the street, you're going to pull in the driveway?
I know, but that, see, that would have to depend on you. We can't, or with the commission, they have to depend on you that it was there. Another question that was raised at the last meeting was what happens in the wintertime with ice and snow coming onto that hatchway?
It will be cleared every day, where every time there's snowfall, for sure, and then make a path to the back of the house.
I know, then we're depending on an awful lot. I didn't bring it with me, but I do have the regulations for home daycare. Does your mother have that?
She has all the paperwork.
You have that, okay.
Which regulations do you need? I'm sorry.
No, the home daycare regulations from the state of Connecticut, it's about, I don't know how many pages, quite a large. I'm just asking you that you've read it, because it is quite extensive on what's required and how many people you have to have working with you for how many children you have and the ages you have and everything of that type. Now, do you have your license from the state already?
Yes.
You do.
We had a home inspection. They were there for over four hours checking everything, and they signed off on it, and they said everything's perfect.
That's really amazing, because the schools require that you have exits on grade. In fact, most schools, you have, the door is in each classroom on grade, and I don't know if you have the comments from, the fire department had concerns about it, but they, he made the comment that he did see that the state allows it in below grade for... grade for that, so he wasn't really having a major objection, but he himself didn't like the idea of it below grade. Telling you the truth, I don't like it myself below grade, because as Linda said, there's a lot of problems with hatchways. And your furnace is right, close proximity to the play area. I don't know where your oil storage tank, I would imagine that's near the fire, I'm sorry, near the furnace, unless it's an outside tank, I don't know what that area has. I don't know, I mean... It looks like a very nice, very, very nice place to have the kids, but it isn't below grade, I don't know.
Is it possible that you would consider, you know, upping the age of the children that she was taking care of, so that they weren't necessarily infants, where, you know, where you would have to actually carry, you know, multiple people out of there, where, you know, they could, you know, at least scamper up the stairs if you opened the door for them, so that, you know, like you said, you know, I think that everybody has a health concern, that what we don't want to do is provide, you know, an environment where it would jeopardize anybody's life safety. And, you know, obviously, children are our future, and we, you know, we have to, you know, look very carefully and very, you know, scrutinize everything about, you know, children and where they're going to be, so that, you know, if there was an emergency and something did happen, you know, where, you know, people can, you know, more or less get out on their own power, would be probably less objectionable than, you know, having people totally relying on somebody having to carry them out of the premises, so, you know, and again, it's just a suggestion as a possibility, unless there were multiple people there, you know, and, you know, it's probably very rare that something happens, but if something happens, you know, it's not gonna, you know, we could never forgive our own selves for, you know, putting somebody in that kind of an environment.
The ages of the kids are supposed to be, there's no more than two kids that are under two years old, and then the other four, if there is that many kids, then they can be older than six, I guess, so from two to six, the four, and then up to two kids that are under two years old. And the oil, and the oil tank and the furnace are on the opposite area, opposite side of the basement, but I understand it's on the same level, and that raises a concern, too.
Well, yeah, but there's, I don't know if it's a fire-rated wall between the furnace room and the rec room, or anything about that, because I'm not into inspecting houses. Or another one would be, what alarms do you have?
A CO detector and a fire detector.
You do?
Smoke detector, yeah.
Where are they located?
Next to the fire extinguisher.
There's a fire extinguisher as well?
Sir, you would have to, sir, you would have to come up and identify yourself and speak into the microphone.
Sorry. My name is Miroslav Kuharczyk, I am husband of Boguslawa Kuharczyk, and the fire extinguisher is on the picture, I guess, because I made these pictures. And over there is the carbon detector, and higher is the fire detector. We have located a lot, like ten maybe, fire detectors in our house, everywhere, in the basement, in the first floor, and attic, everywhere, you know, because that was the requirement from the state. They need, you know, like, each level supposed to be a fire detector. And there is no, we don't have any plans to make any changes, like building changes or property changes, because what's the question before, like two weeks ago about that? It looks the same, only changes since, a little bit in our house, that's it. Like, finish the basement, you know, that was before, years ago, that was furnished, but damaged, and we fixed everything, and looks like on the pictures, looks pretty good right now, and everybody liked it, I guess, for kids to go. Should be okay.
Thank you. So your hours of operation is 7:20 to 5:00?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Monday through Friday.
Okay, so there'd be nobody there on Saturday or Sunday?
That's correct.
And your drop-off area would be in the driveway?
Yes, sir.
On the left-hand side?
Yes, yep. Away from the neighbor, yep.
Yeah. Any further questions? Jenny, I see you're...
I was just going to look in the regs about daycare, for us, for child daycare.
Okay, any further questions before we open it to the public? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would speak in favor or against the application? Last, okay, I see someone's coming. If you'll move your seats in, and if you wish to answer anything that she has, then it's your opportunity. Ma'am, your name and address, please?
Nancy Middleton, 4 Cheryl Drive. I just wanted to clarify the drop, the entrance way, are the children coming in through the house, or are they coming in through the side entrance, going in the bulkhead?
The bulkhead is in the back, isn't it? Yes. No, that would be in the exit, I, well, I don't know.
No, through the front door, right next to the driveway.
Okay.
Should I introduce myself again?
No, that's fine. Anyone else in the audience would speak in favor or against the application? Any questions from the Commission? I'll ask again. Anyone in the audience would speak in favor or against the application? Last call to speak in favor or against the application. What's the word for the Commission, to close it? Okay, then I shall close Public Hearing 2883.
My concern is that we're just, oh, do I have to wait till he reads it before we talk about it?
Well, you could either way, it doesn't make any difference.
I'll wait. Fairly recently, we had another daycare that we declined because it was in the upstairs.
It was on the second floor.
Right, it was not on the main living area.
Right.
And it was the same type of daycare. I have a problem with, I thought Linda made some very valid points when she discussed, you know, in the basement and the bulkhead, I just...
Sir, if the public hearing is closed, you can...
I think that while it says it in the book, it meets the criteria, I think that we have to take a very hard look at children, because we're making the decision for that.
I guess, I mean, I think, speaking to that, I don't, I think that's where the state would come in, because the regulations that I see don't specify that it has to be in the basement, or on grade, or upstairs, and so if the state were concerned with the welfare of the children, I think the state would decline to give the permit for that. That's my, I think, I don't know what our authority would be.
Well, it is by, by even the state regulations require authorization by the local board, but...
But that would be pursuant to the regulations that we have that don't specify basement.
Well, I read the paper every day about certain departments of the state where there are problems.
It's a special permit, which is health, welfare, and public safety, so you can consider health, welfare, and public safety in your consideration, and the state does require that the town approve it, even if they approve it, and there are instances that we, that this Commission has turned down applicants that were approved by the state, and the state has gone along with that, and because the legislature has said that the local municipality can exercise its zoning authority. And if it was a site plan, then, you know, it might be a little different thing if you didn't have anything in the regulations that said you can't be in a basement. With respect to, you don't allow living quarters in the basements. There's no, and many times, we are forced to turn down renovation permits where they want to put bedrooms in a basement that has a bulkhead. It's not allowed in your regulations.
I guess for me, I kind of feel like with the, the state has the requirements, and they do a lot with regard to regulating the daycare facilities. I also think it's up to a parent. A parent's not gonna put their child, or if they feel uncomfortable with it, they're probably not gonna have their child go to that specific daycare. So, to me, I think that, you know, I understand both sides of it, but in some ways, I feel like, you know, parents have that option, and if you don't want that for your child, or you're afraid of that, then that's an option you can exercise. So, that's just how I guess I feel about it.
If we don't allow adults...
Oh, I'm still sleeping here. If we don't allow adults to sleep downstairs, have apartments downstairs, how can we justify having two-year-olds down there, or babies down there, and there's a fire? I mean, it's been, one, two, three, three, four people have cited the fact that it is a danger, and we're here to protect people, never mind babies. In all justification, I cannot vote for this.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if somehow the bulkhead could be modified to make this a walkout basement? Would that change things?
You'd have to have, the state building code calls for a walkout, but it also calls for the egress windows, you know, the kind that you can, like, get through, and most basements don't have that, and that's quite cost prohibitive.
One person and a couple of two-year-olds would really have a problem getting up those stairs and open up that bulkhead. I mean, I have a bulkhead in my house. I have problems getting out.
The one with the, last one we turned down, our concern was, how do you, and this was the second floor, how do you get two youngsters, one in each hand, and open doors or help their brothers out? And it's almost, would be almost an impossibility if you got one kid in each hand and there's only one of you, because that's, I think, all the state requires. I don't know. That's, it's a problem. I'd rather see him on grade level, and if the state in some circumstances require grade level for kids, then they ought to require grade level, I mean, on level for all the kids.
I think I would be comfortable if they had a playroom downstairs, but the daycare was actually conducted mostly up on that first level, so it'd be easier to get in and out. I know that they've put a lot of money into their basement, it's, it looks like a beautiful basement, but, and a great playroom, but to actually allow the children to nap down there, because it looks like there's a couple of little cots down there for them to sleep on, that's the part that, you know, you're waking up babies and, and as Rich said, you know, how could we live with ourselves if, God forbid, not that I ever want to see anything bad happen to anybody, but, you know, bad things do happen, and we never can predict that, and to have the majority of, like, the sleep area upstairs, and just have them down there, you know, playing for a little while, and lunch upstairs, whatever, I would be okay with that, but to have this as a, their main focused room and staying down there all day, that, especially during the nap time, that's my concern. There's a question.
Okay, you ready for vote?
I don't think there's a motion pending.
There is a motion.
There's no motion.
Well, there are two, there's...
There's two draft motions, one if you found that it was something you could support, and one if you found it was something you couldn't support, and, you know, you could consider either of them and mark them up as you feel is appropriate.
Don't be bashful, people, I can't make motions. I can vote.
I'd like to make a motion, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received an application for a child daycare to be located in the basement of a residential home located at Three Woodlawn Street, MAP 101 Lot 81, Residential 33 Zone, and whereas a public hearing was held on November 2nd, 2017, and whereas the Commission has determined that the on-street parking and drop-off is not safe and could cause cars to queue on the street, and whereas the Commission has determined that the location of the daycare in the basement with the only direct means of egress through a bulkhead, and now therefore be it resolved, resolved, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby denies PH 2883 for a daycare to be located in the basement of a residential home at Three Woodlawn Street.
The only thing that I'd like to do is, we, could we deny it without prejudice in case the applicant wants to come back and say they've modified their plan, that they would accept, you know, putting part of the daycare in the upper level, and, you know, utilize the lower level for, you know, play activities, and if there's any sleeping activities, that all the sleeping activities would occur at the upper floor level, so that this way we would give them the option that they could modify their application?
Right, well, we can deny it without prejudice, and then all of what you said is great, but they could work with staff to make it a little less use of the basement and a little more use of the main area.
I don't think I'd want the little kids down there no matter whether it's right, no matter what.
Well, we'll deny it, if we deny it without prejudice, and still deny it.
If you deny it, the only thing prohibition is, you deny it and they can't bring the same thing back with six months, but if you deny it and they potentially change it, they can bring it back, so you don't really have to deny it without prejudice.
Okay, well, then, I'll just deny it. Somebody has to second it.
Yeah, I know, I think. You people been here long enough to know the routine.
I'm seconding.
No, we can discuss it, really, any discussion.
Okay, the only thing I could say is, if you could come back with a different plan where you modify this so that the children aren't always in the basement, I don't have a problem with them going down there for a little while playing, but the sleeping, things like that, being upstairs, yeah, I understand you sleep on the second floor. being upstairs, yeah, I understand, you sleep on the second, you know, you're sleeping, you're trying, you've got to work a second shift, I understand the noise level for you, but just for the safety of the children, so that your mom could have this daycare, if you could modify this plan a little bit.
I wouldn't want to see the, the younger kids, that they can't walk by themselves, or...
Yeah, down there. Just, just for their protection.
Can I speak?
That's right, I know. But she's telling them, this discussion, and she's telling them what they could do as kind of that.
If they could do that, that would be a great thing. I mean, just modify this.
We're talking, yeah.
So...
Okay.
I think that Roger said that they could come back with a changed application, so...
They could work with Roger and the staff, and I think that would be a good thing.
I think we could just vote out.
I mean, I don't want to say you could never have one, but maybe modify it in some way.
Well, we really are talking among ourselves, not with them. You can talk with them after.
You're doing what? I can't hear you.
Okay.
Just saying is, it's...
We're supposed to be discussing with ourselves. Now, I'm waiting, now, if you're ready to move the question, you can vote.
I move the question.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's be ready, then. All in favor?
Deny.
Oh, it's the favorite denial, right? One, two, three, four.
Liz, you're in favor too of denying.
To deny it? Wait a minute. That was a...
It was a negative, it was a negative, it was a negative resolution.
Liz, it's to deny it, Liz.
Well, one, two, three, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, six, I think. Six, six, four.
Negatively.
Negative.
One against, and no abstentions. One against was Mary. Again, what they, what is, the discussion is, if, if you don't put anybody that can't move and move fast downstairs, it sounds like some of the commissioners would be agreeable to having the daycare there. But not with young toddlers, or kids that aren't able to move by themselves in the, in the basement. But they would be agreeable to having the ones that could move. I'm not saying they all would, it sounds like some would. I don't know what the total number would be, because you've got seven commissioners, and then, and three, you know, and three alternates. So you sort of be like rolling the dice. But if you work with Roger, there may be possibilities, no guarantees.
I would never vote, I'm sorry.
All right, so there's one, but you don't have to...
Vote the children being down in a basement or on a second floor.
To play, to play?
That's it. I'm done talking.
All right, that's fine. I'm just saying what was said.
Maybe we should have a couple-minute break.
Okay, yep, fine.
So I can go home.
Make a motion.
I move we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Very good idea.
Same time.
I'll second that.
Do we vote? Yes. Oh.
Call the meeting back to order, and Secretary, take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard, absent, Charles Lad, absent, Nicholas Lefakis.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar.
Here.
Richard Suzak is here.
Altavus, DeGray, and Gruber will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. And we have an individual out there, can we help you first?
Honey baked ham.
I'm sorry?
I'm with honey baked ham, I'm number fourteen on the list.
Oh, that's not for tonight, is it?
No.
Honey baked ham, we tried to tell them that it was administrative approval and we'd handle it, but they wanted to come and maybe do a little promo for honey baked hams.
I'm sorry, I don't need to talk at all, I had to come from Boston.
So.
All right, I just saw you out there.
To bring some samples.
So, all I can tell you is Rick Rascelli has enthusiastically endorsed honey baked hams, and he would love to see you guys approve this later tonight, but, sir, you don't have to hang around, or you could hang around.
Okay, well, let's not waste time, and let's get going. Eight twenty-four referral, twenty-eight South River Street. That's in our packet. Okay.
Yeah, the way it was stapled together was that the draft resolution for the commission was on the back, and the one on the front was actually the resolution of the council referring it to this commission, so I know I found it confusing.
Okay.
Twenty-eight South River Street is a large parcel of land that goes backwards of the Connecticut River, and there is a little map in your packet that shows you that property.
It's quite a parcel, as you can see, and it would be my way, although it says it's near the boat launch, it's really quite several away, but it actually would probably, I don't know how the grade goes down to the river there, but it may be a better location than the present boat launch, or you could have two boat launches.
Or you could have it for passive recreation, or people picnic.
The picnics or anything, yes.
I think it's an excellent idea.
It's a beautiful location, and I've been by there several times, and I think it's, it looks like it's something that's worthwhile, the town getting ahead of. It is down, three lots down from the Barnes Boat Launch, and it's on a narrow road, so they'd have to provide some kind of parking, but they have plenty of parking at the Barnes Boat Launch, too, so there'd be plenty of room there. It's a great parcel, even if you look at the other parcels there, it's one of the largest. So, the chair would entertain a motion, or?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna add, I agree in terms of, you know, it has a significant frontage compared to all the other properties adjacent to it, so it definitely has, you know, a good access to the Connecticut River. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, you know, eight twenty-four referral acquisition of twenty-eight South River Street, the Planning, Zoning Commission, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received an eight twenty-four referral for the acquisition of twenty-eight River Street, map eight, lot nineteen, residential zone R thirty-three, and whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed an eight twenty-four referral for the acquisition of eight twenty-eight South River Street, map eight, lot nineteen, residential zone R thirty-three, now therefore be resolved that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby forwards a favorable recommendation to the town council for the acquisition of twenty-eight South River Street, map eight, lot nineteen, residential zone R thirty-three, resolved this second day of November two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? I guess we already had it. All in favor? Opposed? unanimous. Good. Now, the next one is eight twenty-four referral for the acquisition of thirty-three North River Street. This, for all of your information, is the Casket Company Building, and.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the only comments I'd like to make on this is that you're approving the acquisition of a parcel, and your action tonight doesn't say what becomes of that parcel or any improvements on it, it's just simply a favorable recommendation that the town should acquire it, and secondly, that reviews of eight twenty-fours generally confine themselves to whether or not the acquisition is consistent with the goals of the plan of conservation and development. This parcel is very much involved in the proposed Enfield train station, and so is consistent with the goals of the plan of conservation and development.
Also, along with acquisition of property along the river for the enjoyment of the people.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of, or an eight twenty-four referral of acquisition of thirty-three North River Street, whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received an eight twenty-four referral for the acquisition of thirty-three North River Street, map seven, lot twelve, Thompsonville Village TV Zone, and whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed an eight twenty-four referral for the acquisition of thirty-three North River Street, map seven, lot twelve, Thompsonville Village TV Zone, now therefore be it resolved, resolve the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby forwards a favorable recommendation to the town council for the acquisition of thirty-three North River Street, map seven, lot twelve, Thompsonville Village TV Zone, resolved this second day of November two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor? Opposed? No abstentions, unanimous. By the way, at the last discussion, and on to the page tonight, maybe they were listening to me, but there's, I brought in last week's On Our Town, out of the Enfield Press, and the last chapter deals with the old town fathers, and you'll see that the railroad crossing was on grade. And now, they said, if you read it, they were planning for years ahead in the acquisition and better use and so forth. Well, they didn't look this far ahead. It did take care of their needs for many years, and I just thought it was curious, because we just were discussing it, and from what I had found on other things, I thought it was that way, but I've never seen anything that specifically had said that.
We also learned, Mr. Chairman, that Mrs. Church had a favorable visit in her Worcester home.
Yes, you did. Oh, they traveled all over back then, which is amazing, and people go out west, and it's all, I love to read that, "Our Town," it's very, very interesting, and I'm not pushing for the Enfield Press, but they publish this every, every week, it's a weekly, and they put this in, back in whatever, usually it's the same day that they come out, and this one happens to be eighteen eighty-seven, but they put in all the little happenings, and they used to have a baseball team that used to travel all over, and they always told the record of this baseball team, it's, that's an interesting article.
I just wanted to note that you brought it in and asked me to study it, so I read the entire thing.
Good. Okay, so much for my plug for the Enfield Press in that article, but it was, it was funny, because we had discussed it. We had discussed it at the meeting, the special meeting. Okay. Director, correspondence, anything that we have to correspond?
Mr. Chair, I had asked to add this to the agenda about the granny pods discussion. I saw an article in the Connecticut Law Tribune that seemed to suggest that it wasn't too late to have public hearing on the state's new allowing of granny pods, and that municipalities may be well-served to have a public hearing and determine whether they wish to add any other requirements to the state's mandate, and so I wanted to bring that up for discussion and maybe consider.
I had talked to Roger, you know, he told me that, and asking Roger if there's any benefit to going along with what the state had, or was there benefit to doing it ourselves? Roger's interpretation was that really we could do the same thing as ourselves and have more control over it than going with what the state had.
Right, and I think, I think a public hearing would be a good, a good time to discuss that and get input about, or a workshop perhaps.
Yeah. I had discussed that with Roger, too, and the councilman had watched the proceedings, and there is a lot of disfavor for mobile vehicles in town, we do allow them for fires and so forth, and so it is something I thought was worthwhile, but then you consider they can, they can add to their house and have something that they can use later, and this is something that has to be plugged in to water, it has to be plugged into everything, and after, after you don't use it anymore, you don't have it. So, I don't know, I ended up myself, what are the benefits?
And they could be sitting there for like thirty years, and you think about it, I could have that happen in my house, I'm in my sixties, and I say, oh, to my son, oh, let's do a granny pod, potentially, with today's medicines and my history of health, I could live to early hundreds, I could be there thirty or forty years, and how well would that mobile thing hold up, and then, you know, what do you do with it? Nobody's gonna buy it, and that company could be out of business, that sold it, they're not gonna take it back.
So, I don't know.
A lot of issues.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's a benefit of regulations, because, I mean, the state's, the state's statute does have a lot of instruction and requirements in saying that if, you know, the need for the granny pod ceases, it has to be removed, it's not transferable amongst family members, so I think that's something that the commission should consider.
Right, but you could control that by your own self, you don't need to state the requirements for that.
Right, but we would have to, you know, we would have to hold the hearing and opt out and discuss it at a public hearing.
Well, yeah, but I'd rather discuss it first, like we're doing here, at a workshop, and then see whether we want to bring it forward, because you have some that may, and some may not. Right now, after looking at it and talking to some other people, to myself, if I had it, I'd rather put an addition on the house, like a lot of them are doing, and then I have something after the house, that approves the house.
We also have to consider those that can't afford a full addition, and this could be cost-effective, but again, that's something, if we don't, you know, if the commission does not like.
We could talk, we could discuss it at a workshop when we have it, and put it on a workshop thing, because we did bring it in, and Charlie brought it in, too.
I mean, I do recognize, I think the state has, at least the statute itself, has requirements that we would have to meet in order to opt out, and it's not just a workshop, I think it would have to be.
Well, that's why we wouldn't even have to opt in or opt out, as we could do it ourselves, period, and use the regulations from the state, for that matter.
But we'd have, we'd have to opt out.
Have to opt out.
You'd have to opt out, but there's no deadline for opting out, so you could opt out.
It is automatically applying in Enfield until such time as the commission decides to opt out, so right now, someone could come in with granny pod application.
But realistically, I don't know how many you're gonna get, because you're gonna have to hook them up to public water and public shore, and you're gonna have to post a fifty-thousand-dollar bond for the removal of the material afterwards, and you still have to meet the setback requirements and so on and so forth, so when you, when you take a really look at it, I'm not sure how many of those are gonna be coming in, but if they do come in and they meet all the requirements within fifteen days, they have to be approved. But so far, based upon the discussion that takes place on the Connecticut listserv amongst planners throughout the state, has been very little, very little activity with respect to them. The activity is happening with respect to the towns, or, once towns find out what it is, they're, they're tending to opt out, and if they, if they're in favor of doing something similar, then they're writing their own regulations that are consistent with other regulations that you would have. So, I mean, I think, I agree, just put it on a workshop and discuss the pros and cons, and if we were gonna do it ourselves, what would be the, what would be the requirements that this commission would be, would want to have?
I'm ready for a granny pod.
You're ready for one, okay. I think it's a good idea, yes, to do it in a workshop, and can I add one more thing into a workshop?
Sure.
Can we please? I've had somebody else come up to me and talk to me about chickens again, so can we please?
I give up.
Do chickens?
We actually have a draft chicken regulation, but also, I just wanted to bring to the commission's attention an article in the Hartford Current within this past month about diseases that are, that are, you know, being traced back to backyard chickens. About a whole half a page or more in the Hartford Current, which we'll make available to you, so.
And I think on that, I remember years, a couple of years ago, there was this epidemic of bird flu, and then all those articles came out about how you're not supposed to, you know, cuddle and hug your chickens, and everyone was very upset, and I know some people that are, that love their chickens.
But we, but the good news is, we took the Southfield regulations, and we did modify them, both Jen and Raquel worked on them, and we do have some drafts, which we were gonna forward to you, then that health article came out, and we kinda went, ooh. So, you know, we will get them out to you, and you can look at them, and we can workshop.
Donna's daughter would be very happy, because she's the one that was going to Southfield Agricultural School and was interested in doing it, and I don't know how old the girl is now.
But on chickens, you know, there is the request, and a couple of weeks ago, I got a request that came actually forwarded from the mayor, that somebody asked him, and the question was, how many ducks or chickens per acre can you have in Enfield? And so, there is really no answer to that question, you go to the, to the thing that in order to have a farm or an agriculture use, you have to have three acres, but then how do you determine how many ducks or hens or chickens that you could have? And, because there is a request to go from fifty ducks at the moment to five hundred ducks on a parcel, and so you really have to get into, well, what are your, what are your, your lot coverage requirements, how are the ducks housed, what are the, so I went to the building department, and I said, so what are your standards for duck houses? And they said, D U C T houses, or D U C T duck, or D U C K duck, and I'm like, no, D U C K ducks, so there's no answer, it's not like you can go to the book and say, oh, you get, you know, a hundred and fifty ducks per acre, but that is a legitimate question that is on our pending list, that a resident of Enfield wants to know how many ducks per acre, and can I have five hundred ducks?
I would suggest to any of them, until you have a drop-dead, otherwise, it, it's common sense, if you have three acres and put in, I don't know, twenty-five elephants, because you're breeding elephants, the stench and the runoff and all that, the health department would be involved, so it's common sense, but I also, on another matter, would like to add Manning Road, the end of Manning Road, to the workshop, changing the zone.
Yeah, I would suggest that due to the fact we have pending litigation on Manning Road, that we don't discuss that at this point in time.
I asked him about that.
Oh, well, you had said wait for the next workshop.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, I'm just, I think, I think, this commission is currently a defendant on action taken with respect to Manning Road, so perhaps.
Okay, well, we'll go back to the chickens, if you check East Windsor's regulations, they do it, they have a formula for the, I gave you a copy of East Windsor's chickens one night, the, they do it by, each acre is allowed so many per head, and it's like chickens are so many, and horses are so many, and cows are so many, and that's how they do it.
Yeah, we don't have that, so it's really, I mean, it really comes down to, give us a site plan and tell us where these, where these ducks are gonna live, and how are you gonna deal with the runoff, and whether you have wetlands, or whether you have slopes, I mean, it's, you know, until you, until you look at the site plan, and, you know, where are you, where are the ducks gonna be, you don't know.
Do they register as a farm with the state? Are they being taxed as a farm?
I don't know the answer to that, so I mean.
It's just tough for an applicant.
But that's a perfect example of how we get asked questions, and like, how come you don't have an answer? It's a simple question, how many ducks per acre?
Yeah, and I think that, I think that, you know, causes us, or should cause us, to think, okay, if this is a question that the planning office is getting more, you know, more and more often, as recreational chicken farming comes, you know, becomes more popular, maybe that's something we should address.
I mean, today's.
Wow.
And there was a guy downtown, used to have him over here in the corner, where there's a.
Okay.
So, we're done with the ducks and the chickens.
Yeah, we weren't trying to duck the answer, we were just.
It's not all it's quacked up to be, either.
I was just gonna say, what are you whacking us up?
Let's go. Director, Commissioners' Correspondence, now, that's Commissioners', Director.
Maybe we can go out of order and take up the ham, you know, we go from chickens to ham.
We've got too many of those here.
Well, we got the ham guy down here, yeah, I know, we have too many.
I think we should allow the guy to have his honey baked ham storefront. Number fourteen, I think we should allow Roger, the planner, to authorize for administrative approval, the honey ham.
Well, you don't have to take items out of business, and so.
I move that we take item number fourteen out of order.
I second it.
There we go, all in favor? Good.
You wanna come forward, sir, and tell us how you're open one week before Thanksgiving and two weeks before Christmas?
Two weeks before Thanksgiving, god.
Yeah.
Take forever.
Yeah, just come up and introduce yourself.
My name's Mark Demis, I'm from the Honey Baked Ham Company, we do these express stores all over the country, I have forty-two of them open right now, we, the plan is, we open them up, and they eventually become full-service stores, our average unit volume's about a million and a half a store, and Enfield, I do all my demographic studies, and you guys are right in the center of where people will come from thirty miles away, and it'll be a great store, so, part of the reason I'm here is it's not, hopefully it's not just a temporary store, sometimes we open them up for one season, maybe it'll be one more year, but within the third year, if we're here, if we're here this year and we do another one next year, you're for sure gonna have a full-service store the third year, so, that's what we do, unless there's any questions.
So, I was just bringing the hams from Newington up here, and as I said, Rick Rascelli would be delighted, because he'd now have to drive to Newington.
There you go, we have a whole process, our QA department's probably more strict than your health department, so.
Roger, can you do the administrative approval so that if nothing changes, he can just come to the planning staff every year?
That's usually the major motion, when the motion is made, that's the way we handle car shows and other things.
Yeah, well, I'm sure he'd love to come and visit us, but, you know, this would save him.
But the thing is, he may not have that storefront available next year, because, you know, he's gonna be here for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then he's gone, and I'm sure that if the shopping center can find a tenant, that'll be there between January and next Thanksgiving, he'll be in some other location.
Yeah, what we do is, we, I already have, we set up, we pay a small monthly fee, with the intent of coming next year, and if they get a five-year tenant or something like that, of course, we have to move out, so, if I do ten of them, that we get kicked out of a couple of them out of the ten.
Okay, where's one thirty?
It's the old Verizon, next to, just to the left of Home Depot.
Freshwater Plaza, where Verizon was.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'm just curious.
Okay, can I put forth a motion that we allow authorization for administrative approval of one thirty Elm Street?
Second.
Motion's made, second, discussion?
No, I just gotta say, this is a good store.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thanks.
Sorry, okay.
Be open quickly, he'll say.
Yeah, good. Okay, Roger, you're on.
One of the things that I. One of the things that I gave you is a proposed order of business for the next three meetings. We have, which I'd just like you to take a look at and move around if you, if you so desire, but we, we, the office is just overrun, if that's a phrase. I mean, the good thing is, a lot of people want to build, improve, add on, change the use of buildings in Enfield. So you have a draft list there, where we're trying to sort out what we can do when the, and that goes into, like, some of the ones you're accepting tonight, some ones you've accepted previously. Here we go. And you asked for a special meeting with respect to Simon Road, Scannick Villages, so I know Commissioner, you know, Linda is not available on December 14th, but that is a night that you do it. Other than that, you would be doing it, like, December 28th, which is between Christmas and New Year's, and then people are going to say, you're trying to have a public hearing when nobody can attend. So, looking at everything you have going on there, the November 16th, you'd have.
We're going to be doing more than one meeting on that.
Yeah, I know, but, so that would, that would probably move over to December 21st, and then it might go to January.
Go into January, well, from what they put in last, last time, it's a, unless they've drastically changed it, but the court, I thought, said it was basi, I thought it was going to be basically the same. It's not.
It's basically the same, it's basically the same.
There's a lot to it, and there were a lot of waivers.
No, I'm just saying, you asked for the initial meeting, the initial meeting to be nothing but it, and so, the day you have is December 14th available on your calendar, if you, because you've got so many other things to take up, and then it rolls over, and you'd have a special meeting after the holidays in January, if you wanted to continue it. So, you'd start it in December 14th, and then you'd roll it over to a special meeting in January.
Oh, yeah, it'll be rolled.
But at least this, December 14th would allow you to open it up, have the presentation, find out what it is, and everybody becomes, begins, becomes familiar with it. That is the earliest you could take it up, because a subdivision that borders an adjacent town had to be referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments, which it was, and they have 35, they have 35 days to comment on it. So we couldn't, we couldn't take it up sooner than then. Or if you don't want to have a special meeting in December on it, we could ask for an extension from the applicant and roll it into January.
Well, that's, it's whatever you want, I just.
Did you send it to East Windsor as well as Krag?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because there was a piece of it, as I recall, that East Windsor was.
There is a section of open space that's in East Windsor.
I think the first time around, they wanted to, they were thinking about asking East Windsor if they could have direct access from East Windsor's road, that's why I asked you.
No, it's not this time.
So, that's, I mean, there's some changes, but it's, and it's a subdivision, so it's not going to be like what we generally.
Well, there is a lot of homework that has to be done on it. There's four storage boxes of materials from when it was approved from Wetlands Commission that we need to go through, and determine whether or not it's, it would possibly need to go back to Wetlands. That's an open question, until we review all of the materials that were submitted to Wetlands back in, what, 2009.
What do we do to the butters? Because the Scannick River Association has trails down through there, I think, or they were talking about them. Do they have to be notified, or?
I'm not sure if they have to in the regulations.
Did we get them listed?
Yeah, we did.
You, you have the, some, you asked for the technical things to be added to your subdivision regulations, and we gave you the subdivision regulations tonight, along with the technical requirements on the end of them. But as far as notification of the butters, I'm, I'm not sure at this point was required or not.
Well, I know they came in, and they had some questions about, and some changes they wanted along the river, so that they had access, or it was.
Right, and, and what, what staff has to do is, we have to know the wetland approval in and out from 2009, and we have to know what the issues were when it was before this commission, and so that we're able to properly get all the information to you.
One big one was the escarpments and how they were going to take care of them.
Right. One of the things we did ask the applicant to provide this time, which they have, is we asked for a map of all slopes in excess of 20%. Your regulations actually talk about 25% as escarpments, but more and more towns are considering 20% as unbuildable. So we asked for a map showing that. But, you know, that has to be scheduled, what you already have coming forward for the next meeting, is you have the King Street interlocking connections application that you had a couple of weeks ago, and you postponed. Then you have the repainting that took place of Plaza Esteca without a permit, which is, will be coming in and asking you basically to approve what was there.
What was there, or what is?
No, I mean, what they did. Yeah, that's, I mean, the color that's up there now, that they put there, so you'll have to determine whether that's consistent with your design regulations and standards. And then you have the pylon sign for Coles Plaza.
That one shouldn't take long.
That's coming forward. And then, number four is the water pollution control facility, which I did get a phone call from the Director of Public Works, who asked if we could, you know, see our way to moving that along for them. That did go to Wetlands two or three months ago, and then there was some changes that DEEP wanted, so we are sending one portion of what they want to do back to Wetlands that was not included in the original approval from Wetlands, and they will have to take that up. But this is basically improvements to the water pollution control facility that is along the Connecticut River, and that is being done in accordance with grants received to the town. So, we would like to ask, we're asking the commission to take that up on the 16th. Then on December 7th, you've got mobile gas station modifications down on King Street. You've got the Riverview shops that are opposite as Nantuck, where they, it's presently zoned residential, and it has.
Is that right?
It has a shopping center there, and then it has a couple of residential houses. There's a potential sale there, and they originally asked for a zone change from R-33 to BG. I had a conversation with them the other day, and there's no BG anywhere around there. So I said, if they wanted to change it, it seemed to me that their best chance of making a compelling argument to this commission would go to BL. So they came in and modified their application to go to BL. Then you have the.
When, when that comes in.
It is in.
That's rather confusing, can you get a, it's almost like Petronas Place, because I think there's a place way in the back.
Right.
And there's the stores along the front from the.
Right, there's residential houses in the back, and the stores in the front, and a prospective buyer has come in and wants to, like, actually expand the shopping or commercial use into the back for the residential portion, so.
But I thought there was one in the back there anyhow. If you go by the old farmhouse, is, is that part of, is that considered part of the plaza? Because they, they come in and exit through there.
It is a confusing site.
It is, so if we get a complete whatever's there. All right.
Also, while we're on that Elm Street, the, the portion of Elm Street that you changed to BL a year ago is moving forward to the Wetlands Commission, so that will also be coming this way, just for your information. Then we have our totally Dodge modifications on Enfield Street that are, that are coming in, have come in, and we have Stop and Shop Plaza with a pylon sign. And then at 55 Hazard Avenue, you have the, where the napper is in the middle, urgent care is on one side, and then you have a vacant space. So they want to put a primary care facility in there with doctors. I have been talking to them. EMS and the fire department have a lot of problems with that dead-end parking lot, where you go in there for the urgent care, and you got to back up a fire truck, and there's no place for an ambulance. So, they have agreed to come in with a modified site plan, where they'd run a ring road around the back and come out onto that, on that side. There are, there is Wetlands there, so we'll, we'll have to look carefully at that, it may have to go to Wetlands. So it may not be ready on December 7th, but we've tentatively put it down for that.
Slow down in my back.
And then in the end of the December, just before the Christmas holidays, the, the town has a truck wash application for up on Moody Road, which actually would be a double thing. You'd have to have an act of protection meeting at 7:00, and a P&amp;Z meeting at 7:30 to deal with that. And then you have the large area flexible residential housing text change that is being put forward by the, by the company that owns the senior residential development on South Road that was approved several years ago, that he would like, they would like to change that to market rate housing. And so, this is in support of that, but it would also allow multifamily housing, and probably, I think we calculated about five areas in town, that they, they would have to be over 20 acres. Presently, your regulations only allow multifamily housing, even though you have multifamily housing in a lot of places, your regulations only allow it if you happen to have 60 acres in the same ownership as of some time in the past, and there's only like two sites in town that would meet that requirement. And so, if you go look at your plan of conservation and development, it says you, you support housing, but you really don't in your regulations at the moment.
Yeah, Roger, that was, that was purposely done at the time.
Right, so.
Didn't want an influx, and we did have people at the same time that did come in and ask to have the same thing with lesser things, and we did say at the time, we would be agreeable after we see, saw how this ran, to have, to consider changing.
Right, so you, you have to take a look at it, but it's, so it's been drafted, we've, we've worked with the applicant, we've modified it five or six times, so it was coming forward, and you, you, you go to public hearing and see what you think. Medhi Weight Loss on 786 Enfield Street. This is an interesting complex, because it's the, it's next to the bank, Sovereign Bank is there, and then the parking lot goes right up. Then you have the building that has the subway in it there, that most of us walk to, and then you have the addition onto that building, and then that's where they would want to put this Medhi, Medhi Weight Loss, which is actually classified a medical facility, because they have examining rooms and medical staff. So it's a change of use to a medical. And then, that same parcel has what the site plan they gave us today says, abandoned golf station. And, you know, that's now the accessory, car accessory place or whatever on the corner.
It's a radio, yeah, right, yeah.
And then you have the other building in the back, which they, they say is like A1 car sales or something, which is now the food, yeah. So the site is like three different uses, all that have the same parking and circulation, and the site plan they gave us is from 1986, that doesn't even adequately reflect what is there now. So staff has taken the position that we can't really, you know, we want to be helpful and say, oh, it's an existing building, you're changing use and you're moving a new tenant in. But normally, we have a site plan that accurately reflects what is there, not one that says abandoned golf station, and A1 whatever, and where the handicap spots are are no longer there, and there's other changes. So we have suggested to them, and that's why it's not till the end of December, they got to give us a site plan that actually looks like what's there now. And also, all of the parking calculations are from 1986, so that's what we're dealing with there. But it's kind of interesting, because in being out there today, that car accessory place on the corner, they're actually installing stuff in the parking lot, and I'm not sure that whatever was approved there was meant to do that. So, they have, people are going in there, buying stuff, and then it's being installed in the parking lot there, so that is an issue that needs to be looked into. So hopefully, we're going to be able to work with the applicant, and it'll be ready by, by the end of December. So, also, what's coming up is we got a 90, 90 pages of drawings in the office for the Wetlands Commission on the Metro Park North, down on King Street, for two, that, that site, which I mentioned, and there's a lot going on with, with the other commissions. So it's going to be a busy, a busy time, which is all good. And then finally, I'll just end with, I gave you the, the procedures and the forms that are used by the office. I know there's been inquiries about that. So you have some sense, and it's all a work in progress, we're continually trying to come up with, you know, streamlined systems, but one of the issues that we have is, in many instances, either you, either you're compliant with the regulations or you're not. We have a situation on Enfield Street right now, where a gentleman wants to sell his automobile business, but the state statue, and it's like, well, it's an unused car place, why can't we just, that's it, change it? But you have a state statue that says that you can change, you can change, transfer a license to, and it defines the relatives you can transfer to. If not, you, you start the process as a location approval. That's, is, it's, that's in a BL zone where automobile uses is not allowed. So we have to start with the notion of, okay, well, the use might be grandfathered then, because there was no effort to abandon it, but they do have to go to Zoning Board of Appeals and have a, you know, have a site plan, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and looking at that, is free to make changes to the site plan. And so, you know, these are things that, when the public comes in, it's like, hey, I just want to sell my business, it's always been a car place, why can't I just continue to be a car place? So, you know, a lot of, what we do is trying to educate the public that the rules and regulations are made by the states, by the state legislature a lot of times. I mean, how, you know, how they get translated into your local regulations is one thing, and, you know, the processes that we have. But, you know, people want to know, well, how long does it take to get an approval? And, you know, you can get an approval in three days, or you can get an approval in nine months. I mean, there is really no way to say. So what we basically say to folks is, if you tell us what you want to do with a narrative, and you give us a sketch, then we will give you a roadmap, and say, this is what you, what you have to do. you have to do. So, I hope that you find that helpful and we, we would like to get your comments on it. And anytime anybody has any suggestions as to, you know, how the, you know, how the process can be, can be streamlined. And I will say this, Enfield is one of the few towns that, that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Wetlands Commissioners regularly meet twice a month. In many towns, they only meet once a month. So, the good news is for applicants, if you get postponed in a meeting, it's only two weeks. It's not a month, so.
But we've always been, that if they're ready and they have everything in line, that we'll have a special meeting for them.
Right, and so, that just leaves us with, do you want to make any changes to this proposed schedule of when you're going to hear things and particularly, do you want to have a meeting on December 14th or you want us to ask the applicant for an extension so you can take that up in January?
Well, I, you're going to end up with multiple meetings with that anyhow and it would be best to get everything out on the first meeting because you probably won't even get a chance to ask questions the first meeting.
I will say though, that it's getting close to holiday season and-
Well, yeah.
With such a large application, perhaps it, you know, having more commissioners available to consider it. In the first instance, the first times it come, time it comes around.
All you have to be able to do is say that you've read the, read or watched or listened or-
Well, I don't think you'd want to take it up after the 14th. I mean, the 14th, the 14th was-
After the 14th is a delay.
They could make their presentation, everybody will know what they're presenting, how it might, how it might be different from what they had, if it isn't different, whatever. And then you would continue it in January, so then you would have, you know, probably a month to consider their, their presentation, develop your questions, notify staff what they are and so forth.
Five or six meetings? Unless they've changed things, it took about five or six meetings and there's only two of us that were here at the time. So, the rest of you are new, so you're going to need those five or six meetings.
I think Blue is three of us, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And Charlie left?
Yeah, Charlie was here, yeah.
Charlie was here.
So, there's, there'll be three of us anyway that have been, will have some idea what they're doing, but if they've changed it. Well, are we staying with it or not? I mean-
Stay with the 14th? Do the 14th.
Okay, we're staying with the 14th.
Okay.
Okay, uh-
Whipper over.
Applications to be rece, well, you already done it, so we're all set with that. What, that's, Parsons Road. Oh, so we're all set with all that that's on the back.
Yep.
Unresolved issues, anybody with a, well-
We are, you talked about the chickens, sir.
Yeah, I know. I gave up on chickens.
I'm not. I'm not giving up.
Well, I'm glad you're the younger ones to take it over because my, my girl graduated a long time ago. Uh, any other business to come before us tonight? Oh, one thing, and I, I don't know if I raised it before, but we, it seems they can find different ways to cause a problem, but My Lott's Package Store or what it used to be, My Lott's, that dumpster is out on the front of the building now. It's out front. Can you get them to get it back or?
Which one is My Lott's?
It's the, one that's a multiple roofs deal that you keep-
The one that was building forever?
It was supposed to be a package store and I don't know what it is.
It's not, it's not open.
Oh, yes, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
No, it's been shut down by, for a long time.
I mean, it was supposed to be a package store, they slowly took over My Lott's.
No, the, the building, fire and zoning departments, we all, we shut that place down months ago because of-
Every once in a while, they're out there, they put in a ramp or something.
I know, they, they, and they are going to, any day now, submit revised plans for the-
Well, they got a dumpster sitting out on the-
So, they should move the dumpster to the back because it's a construction dumpster.
I think there's a bigger dumpster out back.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a construction dumpster.
Well, they got a little dumpster sitting right on Route 4, right out on the main road. It's a nice attraction. Let's see, what else has gone down along there? You go by up there, what have you noticed?
Nothing, really. There's nothing.
As far as I know, 11 Enfield Street, which you approved was at, you know, the, the place that used to be a liquor store with the liquor sign-
Yeah, yeah, right.
-pointing down and it was going to be a coffee shop. They have abandoned those plans.
But the doctor bought the property.
Right, he bought the property and now he's looking for suggestions as to what he could do with it.
Doctor's office.
I saw public hearing signs in front of the pride station. That's what-
Yeah, yes, and matter of fact, the gentleman came here tonight thinking that it was on because he saw those same signs. They have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a variance, so the signs are with respect to that. It will be on the ZBA's agenda the end of November and they've applied to reduce the area that they would need to come in. So, that's what that's about.
Okay, I just saw them and I was like, and I didn't see, and I just thought about that and I didn't see it.
Right, and so, what I've, what we've done with respect to that is we did mail out to the, email out to the commission a list of all pending applications for every commission plus preliminary things that we're working on, so that kind of gives you a heads up on those things.
That was a lot of reading.
Yeah, well, if you want to come upstairs and look at all the plans that are, that are piled everywhere, you know, there's, you know, it's a lot of stuff going on, it's good, I mean-
Maybe you don't have another secretary up there.
Yeah, well, no comment on that.
I know, I know.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Get me out of trouble.
One other, there's a, a sign that needs to be removed and that's the old sign for up, the old gun shop. They still have their sign on the last location.
I thought that was, somebody was going in there.
But that, none of, none of the gun shop.
No, no.
We have a motion on the table.
It's been seconded.
Oh, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second. All in favor? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.